This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9F.
The goings on at Memorial and around the district, you've really given us a flavor that we don't get from the distance that we usually have. We truly appreciate your involvement with the board and we wish you the best as you move on to your next adventures. Thank you. And of course, as Dr. Hardbeck just noted, it is her final board meeting as our superintendent. I won't belabor this point as Dr. Hardbeck has talked on it and Dr. Torres' last meeting spoke so eloquently about your record as superintendent and the difficult and powerful work that you undertook on behalf of our district during your time here as superintendent. Your many contributions will not be forgotten, but instead lifted up as ongoing successes for our great district. I will say that I will miss you. Your insight and wisdom have been invaluable to me in the short time working with you as both a board member and now as board president. Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. On a more difficult topic. Last week, we were all deeply stunned, saddened, and outraged at the senseless murder of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers. We watched and continue to watch with heavy hearts as people around the country, including many of us here in Eau Claire, and around the world have protested the continued systematic racism that leads to people of color facing danger in simply living within our society. To our black and brown friends, family, neighbors, coworkers, and classmates, we mourn with you. We see your pain. We join you in demanding justice and change. I, as a white person, cannot fully understand your experiences. But I'm here to listen, learn, and lend my voice alongside yours. George Floyd's murder is only the most recent example of a system of racism on which American institutions are built. This includes the American educational system. It is another urgent siren demanding change within our institution. Here in Eau Claire, Dr. Hardbeck, our administration and staff have worked hard to address inequity and honor our community members of color in many ways. Adding Hmong language courses and starting the dual-language immersion program being just two examples. Just last week in the Policy and Governance Committee, Jim Schmidt and I discussed the need to clearly address equity in our multi-level system of supports. And Commissioner Clements and I expressed our support of Dr. Torres' vision of seeing tracking and skill level-based courses eliminated from ECASD. In many ways, ECASD has already been a leader in addressing educational inequity. Even so, we have far to go. We have achievement gaps in the same places that nearly every school district in the country faces. We have inequity among racial, gender, special educational groups, and others. And we have a fractured understanding of the true meaning of equity as opposed to equality that threatens our work to address the former. Tonight, I ask for my colleagues on the board, our administration, our staff, and our community to join me in calling for a radical effort to address the inequities in our system, policies, and practices. To be bold in calling out areas that affect our students in systematic ways to rob them of the opportunities given to the privileged many. To no longer settle for simply noting that students of colors are underrepresented in some of our schools and many of our programs or overrepresented in our disciplinary procedures. To instead use our voices to demand results and to hold our district and one another accountable for progress. We cannot do it alone. Our district is predominantly white, and it takes only a glance to see that our board is predominantly white and male. We need to listen to and learn from voices of color, female voices, voices from the LGBTQ community, and others who have experiences that we do not, in order to root out and address the inequity of our system. Together, we can make change in our district to eliminate the barriers that exist. I am willing to ask the hard questions, to have the direct, difficult, and frankly un-Midwestern conversations that are needed. And I believe that many of you are willing as well. I ask, will you join me in learning, asking, teaching, following, leading, and acting to make the changes that we desperately need? I hope that you will. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Johnson, who has a few words as well.
Thank you, Dr. Nardine, for that well-written and timely statement surrounding the murder of Mr. George Floyd and for providing me just a few minutes to share a personal account of the impact the most recent injustices and murders of Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and George Floyd have had on me and my family. I have lived in Eau Claire for 13 years and have experienced my share of racial incidents with both law enforcement and in the community. I am also reminded of the enormous work and efforts that are continuously needed in our community when examining community members' social media comments on sites such as Nextdoor, Facebook, local media outlets surrounding the most recent injustices. Education and the commitment from all those involved in its delivery should be emboldened to shape the next generation's attitudes and behaviors regarding issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion. Discussions of issues related to equity, diversion, and inclusion are a great start, but not enough. Professional development and curricular implementation of EDI are signs of progress, but not enough. And accountability for those who disregard established policies surrounding EDI are warranted, but still not enough. Tangible and positive long-term impact of equity, diversity, and inclusion will require personal daily effort on all community members to be aware of their own biases, prejudices, and cultural incompetence. These daily reminders would allow for all of us to remain engaged in a positive change that most of us seek. I am no longer naive to think that this problem facing our country and community will be solved during my lifetime. I am reminded of stories that my grandmother shared with me as a child, of seeing her family and other community members being lynched, murdered. But reassuring me that I wouldn't have to worry about racism when I became an adult. I am also reminded of the stories that both of my parents shared with me. That both of them being part of the first African-American children to desegregate their respective schools. But they also reassured me that I wouldn't have to worry about racism and injustices when I became an adult to the same degree. To my deceased grandparents and parents' disappointment, I have chosen not to provide my children with these same reassurances. However, it is my hope that genuine efforts by our school district and our community addressing issues as it pertains to equity, diversion, and inclusion will be able to provide all of our children and the next generation those assurances and hope. Thank you for your time.
You, Dr. Johnson. Morgan, you have the unenviable task of following a wonderful outpouring of emotion. Two meetings in a row, but we'll now go to our student representative report.
Thank you, President Nardine. Good evening, everyone. Last week, seniors at both North and Memorial began celebrating their graduations through a series of virtual events. Graduates attended a virtual senior award ceremony as well as a senior slide for which seniors shared pictures from some of their favorite memories during their high school careers. Last Thursday and Friday, North and Memorial respectively, celebrated the graduation of the class of 2020 through virtual graduation ceremonies, which included music from the high school band, orchestra, and choir, student speeches, and the display of student photos and honors as well as scholarship recipients. I believe I speak on behalf of all seniors in the Eau Claire Area School District when I say that we are grateful for all of the time and effort that was put into the creation of these events by staff, parents, and administrators. Finally, I'd like to take a moment to thank the board for having given me the opportunity to serve my peers and community as the student representative during this school year. I've greatly enjoyed learning more about the Eau Claire Area School District and all it does to help our students, staff, and Eau Claire community thrive. I'm thankful having been a member of this wonderful group of dedicated and talented individuals, and I look forward to what new ideas and opportunities they'll bring to the community in the future. Thank you.
You. We'll now move on to school board committee reports. Our first is budget development.
Thanks. Good evening. We're still working, I think, on getting the next budget meeting set. As far as I know, it's not set, but I would like to take a minute to just say a thank you to Dr. Hardbeck for eight years of commitment and hard work on behalf of the students and families of this district. And, you know, I now have the dubious distinction at about four years, just over four years, of being the senior member of a very young board. But having seen Dr. Hardbeck work over these years has been a real privilege and a real honor. I was drawn to the board as a parent with four kids in the district who was able to see how dedicated those educators are that work in the buildings. And I was really struck by this certain factor of dedication that you see in educators that I hadn't really seen elsewhere. It's an unusual kind of business, this business. And I was drawn to it, and it brought me to the board. And very quickly, I recognized that same kind of dedication and commitment and concern for the students and families of the district that I've seen in those teachers as a parent existed here downtown, too. And as board members, sometimes we're working daily with this team downtown, depending on what's going on. It's always at least a few times a month, and I've been able to watch this team work under Dr. Hardbeck's leadership. And I've come away with one certainty: it's that they're working hard for the students and families of this district and trying to find the best outcomes that they can. And Dr. Hardbeck's been just a great partner to the board, in my view, in that effort. We haven't always agreed, but she's always been there at the table with us and has been an incredible voice, as far as I'm concerned, of advice and foresight and experience and knowledge that I have learned is important to listen to and valuable to listen to over the years. And so it's been my great privilege to work with Dr. Hardbeck, and I thank her for being such a good friend of this district for so many years and look forward to more. So that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Demographic trends and facilities planning.
Good evening. This is Kim Kohler. The committee did meet a week and a half ago, and I'm happy to report that we're confident that by the July school board meeting or the first meeting in August, we will have a recommendation to share with the board regarding long-term solutions for some of our elementary schools that are facing overcrowding.
That is wonderful. Thank you. LEAP.
This is Jim Schmidt. We met on May 12 before our last board meeting. We reported to you on the 18th. But since the 18th school board meeting, two of the ambassadors from LEAP did our first ambassadorship with a LEAP zone and met with the Arctic Zone during one of their planning meetings as they're working on their performance agreement renewal. They will again continue that process on June 5, and the LEAP committee itself meets a week from tomorrow on June 9. And some of the tentative agenda items out of their last meeting was an update from the Arctic Zone group and review of their process for proposals and a promotion of LEAP amongst the school district.
Thank you. Policy and Governance met last Tuesday and discussed several items. This was Dr. Torres' last meeting with P&amp;G. Dr. Johnson will be taking his place, starting with the next meeting. We discussed some potential policy changes related to public use of school buildings during public health emergencies, like the one we are currently experiencing. New language around both the Student Code of Conduct and instructional grouping, as you heard me reference in my president's report. And had some discussion around refining the language of our policy on extracurricular activities. All of these policies are in the working stage, and we will bring them to the full board for consideration as soon as they are ready and approved by P&amp;G. I will be contacting Commissioners Clements and Johnson tomorrow to set up our new meeting schedule in concert with Dr. Hardbeck. Thank you. Our next item in the agenda is the legislative updates. Dr. Johnson.
All right. So the Wisconsin Department of Justice Office of School Safety launched a new website, Speak Up, Speak Out. The site's primary role is a one-step resource for threat assessment, consultation, critical incident response, and then general school safety guidance. And then just a cursory examination of the site includes information regarding the 2017 Wisconsin Act 143 requirements. Provides some detail on the Wisconsin Conference of School Security Framework, some crisis planning suggestions that schools can adopt, and then the Wisconsin School Threat Assessment Protocol are all on this new resource website. And then recent federal agency actions. Those of you, if you're not already aware, the Center for Disease Control published their reopening guidelines, which also includes specific recommendations for schools. That could be found on page 42 through 45, and then there's some other guidance for early childhood programs. Then finally, there is on, what is it? Contacting legislators for expressing concerns regarding looming revenue shortfalls. You can find there are some sample letters to legislators and sample op-eds to express your concerns and/or write in the paper, kind of to help inform the decision-makers as it relates to what those funding revenue shortfalls will look like, given that the school districts across the state will be asked to carry some of that burden. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Consent Resolution Agenda. These will be acted on with one vote without discussion. If any board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have the minutes of May 18, 2020. Human Resources Employment Report. WIAA Membership Renewal for 2020, 2021. Ratification of ECASD and ECAE Master Agreement. Appoint School Board Committee Assignments. Community Facility Use Fee Schedule. And Fall Creek 66.0301 Cooperative Agreement. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Dr. Johnson, seconded by Dr. Harder. We do have at least one financial item there, so we will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons? I believe I heard a yes. Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Thank you. The consent resolution passes. Dr. Hardbeck, did you have anything to say at this point? I know often you have announcements after the consent agenda.
I do. I do have an announcement. And today, Michael Johnson was at North to announce the appointment of Kurt Manson as the next principal of North High School. Kurt Manson graduated from UW South with a Bachelor of Science degree in vocational rehabilitation and special education in 2002. He also received a Master of Arts degree in educational leadership from Paterbo University in 2007. Kurt began his teaching career in education at Banker Middle School in Banker, Wisconsin as a special education teacher. He worked there from 2002 until 2007. In 2007, he began at Memorial High School in Eau Claire as the dean of students. In 2009, Kurt became an assistant principal at Memorial. And in 2014, he moved to Meadowview Elementary School, succeeding Dr. Del Bowley to become the principal of Meadowview School and has worked in this role since. You know, I think that, from what I understand, Kurt is looking forward to his time at North High School, being very sad about leaving his team at Meadowview, where he's done very excellent work. And we wish him all the best as he takes on this new leadership responsibility. So congratulations, Kurt. I don't know if you are online with us. We hope you are, and we know that we're all looking for great things from you.
I am. Thank you, everyone. Yes, it was very hard telling the dedicated and passionate staff of Meadowview that I would be leaving on June 30, but today, meeting with the North staff, it was great to see another group of compassionate and passionate educators. It just makes me very excited to be at North High School. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We look forward to great things from North. Thank you. We look forward to great things from North under your leadership. We'll now move into our individually considered resolutions. Our first item is school board member applications, interviews, and appointments. We will run this the same as our last one with one short exception. So you can see on the screen that we have our random.org generator up and we will click that button, let's say now. There we go. That's our, we have a speaking order. Each of the four applicants will have three minutes to address the board. I will once again cut you off at three minutes. I'm sorry, just for fairness. The one difference that we'll have this time is that since we only have four applicants, we will open after your initial statements, we will open the floor to questions from the board. Each applicant will be able to answer each question from board members and after that, we will go proceed by voting the same that we did last time. So at this time, let's get started. Our first applicant is Erica Zer.
Great. Hi.
Yes.
Great. Hello. I'm excited to be here again and grateful for the opportunity. So tonight, I'd like to focus on the issues and work that I could foresee dedicating myself to as a board member. So these issues were shaped and guided largely by my campaign for school board last year. As part of my campaign, I pushed to expand my knowledge base by seeking out conversations with educators and administrators at every grade level, parents, students, and community advocates. I also interviewed members of our among community, African-American students, parents of African-American students, special education students, parents and educators. The observations that I heard, both of challenges and successes are really what have guided my desire to work on behalf of our district. And also I think that the articulation of these issues are what drove my campaign to receive over 7,000 votes, just just shy of Dr. Torres and the endorsement of the Eau Claire Association of Educators. So I would like to talk about these issues tonight and share with you and our community the work that I hope to do and to advocate for as a board member. First, school culture and community. The core of this, I believe, rests in communication and hard lines on equity. I lean more to the flipped system, bottom-up style of leadership, and I will be looking and pressing for student and educator voice in shaping solutions and designing programming to meet the specific needs of our school communities. Community culture and opportunity for meaningful connection was for sure the biggest need and desire I heard from our district's diverse populations during my campaign. Second, equity. This is huge and I think it's time to get serious on the issue. Some of you know that I can be a bit revolutionary in my thinking and this is one area of education in our district and beyond that I think requires quite a bit of that spirit. As a board member, I would push hard for creative solutions to this problem. I would not be opposed to taking a look at secondary tracking, gifted and talented, AP testing, exploring community school models, more innovative programming and support for differentiation in the classroom. Equity is not equality, but it is also not pulling the haves from the have-nots. I believe more peer support and school communities that have enough flexibility to be responsive to student populations is key. And the last issue I want to talk about is the district's commitment to the holistic health and well-being of its students, or the idea of educating the whole child. I'd like to propose that this needs to extend to our staff as well. Current research shows that identifying, understanding, and labeling the emotional landscape, both for students and staff, will lead to educated and practical responses, better communication patterns, and could support more inclusive and holistic practices within our schools. So to close, I will say that I'm ready to get to work. I'm ready to listen to good ideas and I'm ready to lean into this very unique opportunity and time for our district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Justin Hendrickson.
Good evening, members of the board. Two weeks ago, I told you about my qualifications, experience, commitment to the district, and long-term plans, all framed from repeating too much of what you've heard already, but I do want to reiterate my commitment to the community. In October of 2018, I began attending ECASD board and subcommittee meetings so I could get more information about proposed changes to Roosevelt and Northside boundaries. At the end of that process, I decided that I wanted to be a part of the solution by participating in the governance of our schools and that my experience and perspective could help improve the direction of our board. I have continued attending meetings, researching issues, and communicating with members of the board and some subcommittees. In the spring election, I received nearly 300 write-in votes from our community. Regardless of your decision tonight, I will continue to do whatever I can to help this district improve and flourish. In the next year, it will be, the board will have extremely difficult decisions to make from a pandemic that will likely still be very active, as well as funding concerns due to lower-than-expected local tax collections. I look forward to working with you to get the support our schools need to continue their vital work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Omar Parks.
Thank you for, for having me again. I just want to say that with all of the, the information that I was able to provide last week or a couple of weeks ago, in addition to that, especially in light of the recent tragedies that we've been experiencing as a, as a society that I just want to share my experience in terms of what I could bring, I feel I could bring to the, to the board. As a student, as a university student, I went to the University of Wyoming where there were many times where I was the only minority student in, in an auditorium of, of 200 students. And I went to the university at a time when Matthew Shepard, I graduated the semester before he was murdered. And currently working in the community with with Vivint Health, which was the Age Resource Center of Wisconsin. So you get to see a lot of diversity within the community and the value of partnerships. I think that's something that's valuable to bring to the, to the board in the sense that we need to have open discussions about who we are and, and what goes on in our community and how we can support one another. And I think that's important to bring, especially to K through 12 students who are struggling sometimes with their identity, struggling with their direction in life and struggling with academics. And as a board member, I would seek out the opportunity to work with community partnerships and to, to work with individuals and listen to their voice and, and the issues that are important to them and develop a plan on how to, how to support them in their struggles, both as, as students and as family members and members of the community. So I think we are really at a crossroads in terms of defining what we want to do and going forward. There's a lot of changes on the board. There's a lot of changes in the community. And I am motivated to, to be involved with that, whether that is formally as a member of the board or as a participant in the, in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our fourth applicant tonight is Melissa Allen. And it turns out that Melissa is not here. We do have one call in, so we're going to unmute that call in attendee to see if that is Melissa.
Are you Melissa Allen?
No.
Thank you.
All right. So then at this time, we will open the floor to questions from board members. I will ask each of our applicants to limit their responses to two minutes, just in the interest of time and fairness among the applicants. And as a heading something off of the past, Commissioner Lyons, if you have questions, so far, I have felt that your audio has been very difficult to hear. It may be on my end, but just in case.
Is it, is it better now, Tim?
It is a little bit better now. You're just, you still just sound further away than I would say you look from your screen. But at this point, like I said, questions from board members.
Could I, could I go ahead and ask a question?
Dr. Johnson.
So as you know, going into the academic, academic year 2020, 21, there will be a lot of concerns facing the Eau Claire school district. Could you just identify just one of, one of the pressing concerns in, in your view that needs to be addressed for the 2020, 21 academic year?
What I'm going to do for the order here is I'm just going to rotate one down for the starting so that as we go through. So in this case, we'll start with Justin Hendrickson. We'll go to Omar Parks, then to Erica Zer. With the next question, we'll start with Omar Parks and then Erica Zer, and then just in so I will just rotate one down just to make sure that we have multiple chances to be heard first and or last. So, Justin Hendrickson.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. One of the most pressing things currently for me is the COVID pandemic that continues. The science is uncertain currently. And as we move forward, how a second wave could possibly have an impact on our next school year and where how we will be getting students back to classrooms where the education is best handled and for the parents who are struggling to be able to teach their kids and work at the same time. It's critical that we have something in place and working for these families in the district. Furthermore, special education students are, such as my son, have extra impediments, blocks to the types of things that, support that they were getting at their schools that they're not able to get now. And the wonderful staff that we have at all of our schools that helps so much with all of this that we are unable to see and unable to get as much support from as we had in the past. So I would hope that, that my concerns are unfounded, that a second wave would not be a big concern. But I would prepare for the worst and be ready should that come to be, come to be the case in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Omar Parks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your question. I would agree with Justin in terms of the concern for what will happen with the upcoming school year and following school years. If we unfortunately would run into an issue like this, again, looking at the diversity of the, the types of learning models that are out there and how we can best serve our students. We've, we've had previous discussions with the Family Advisory Council on the access that rural students may have when it comes to distance learning or alternative models. So that is something to be mindful of. What are the things that we can do to serve students in terms of maintaining the quality of education, but also diversifying the, the types of delivery methods that we have? Outside of that, continuing to build on those, those wonderful programs that we already have in terms of making sure that students are taken care of as far as mental health and having those resources. I think the, the school district does a wonderful job with making sure that students are very aware of what's going on with themselves and very aware of what's going on with their peers. And would really like to see that continue to move forward.
Thank you. Erica Zer.
Yeah, I think that I can echo, and thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your question. I think it's very important and timely. I think that the greatest responsibility and, and the, and the most difficult challenge that I think our district faces are the multiple interest groups that we sort of have to gel and we have to, to unify with the decisions that we make. And I think if you were to survey parents right now, and I can speak for myself as one of those, you know, we would love school to start. We would love our kids to go back. We would love them to be back to normal because we have to work and we, we have to go on and, and, and it's challenging at home. Social, you know, social, emotional challenges for our kids, academic challenges for our kids, the, the challenges to students in need and who are maybe facing situations at home that are less than ideal. That said, there's also the interest of the staff. And how do we make sure that the staff in our buildings are safe and how do we make sure that anything that we put in place has all of those interest groups and all of those constituents in mind? And I am confident that the work that the district is going to do over the next few months is going to create a great plan that, that takes into account all of those things and, and I would be honored to be a part of that conversation. But I think coursing under all of that is a real challenge that we have with our budget. I think that education is going to be facing a very steep hill to climb this fall, and I think that it's going to take all hands on deck to get out into our communities, to talk about the value of public education, to speak with our voices to, to the value of it and to ask for a funding system that's fair and to ask our communities to stand up and support it. Because we're going to, we're going to need it.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Dr. Becca?
I have a question that's connected to the equity and diversity work of school districts. And I'll acknowledge first that intersectionality should always be the lens for this work. But for this question, however, I want to focus on race. And my question is this, considering all of the accomplishments of your professional life, what has been your most significant contribution to race equity work? What did you do to make this accomplishment happen?
Dr. Becca, we'll start this question with Omar Parks.
Thank you for the, for the question. And I would say that my contribution would be being an educator and knowing the challenges that I experienced as a student growing up. And knowing the, the opportunities that education brought to me and how much of a difference that can make in terms of really opening doors and changing your life. So I started my undergraduate program. I had no idea that I would, you know, be a, an educator. Had no plans. And as I started to see the impact that education had on my life, it was important for me to participate in that and really promote that. So when, by the time I got to my doctorate program, it was really, you know, championing, championing, championing that, if you will, and getting other minority group students that fell into different minority groups into the program by telling them about the program and, and the opportunities that it can bring to them. And just having that personal experience, I know how valuable that is because it really can change your life. And, and every opportunity I have, I really do talk to to students, especially minority students about, you know, what's your plan and how are you going to, to utilize the opportunities that you have to, to really accomplish the goals that, that you want.
Thank you. Erica Zer.
Thanks. So I think I would have to, I'd have to rewind a lot. I'm from, originally from a small town, northeast South Dakota, very white. And I grew up, however, a short drive from a Native American reservation. And Dances with Wolves was filmed near my hometown. And I grew up kind of steeped in Native American culture and, and many friends who were Native American and when I, Native Americans. And when I got into college, I sought an internship in the state legislature where I interned under Senator Teresa Tubols, who was the state senator for Pine Ridge. And that was probably the most significant moment in my life as far as racial awareness and racial work and racial justice, because it was, it made me take off my perspective. I mean, it demanded it. And I saw for the first time in my life what it meant to be a white person, what it meant to have my privilege, and what it meant to stand up for those who did not. And that, that spirit, that, that work, that those questions, the listening, the, the gathering of information, that is something that I have brought forth in my life now as a teacher. I think that asking the questions, when I sought to serve on the school board last year, like I said in my, in my opening statement, I knew I needed perspective. I knew about our, our gaps. I knew about the misrepresentation of, of certain groups. And I sought those groups out and I talked to them and I asked them, what works? What doesn't work? How can we make it better? And those are the questions that I think I would continue to ask.
Thank you. Justin Hendrickson.
I grew up here in Eau Claire and I grew up here in Eau Claire and Eau Claire's racial makeup is predominantly white. It is a place where it is easy to allow biases to slowly seep in and to color your, the behaviors. I have spent my life trying to be mindful and to practice empathy when speaking and when interacting with people and understanding the complexities of everyone's background and story. And it has helped me be, try to be a better person overall. I, I think back to recently as I drove around Eau Claire with my children and seeing some of the protests in front of the courthouse and at Owen Park. And the questions that my children have and how as small nine, 10-year-olds would be very naive and trying to express to them that there is a whole world out there that they don't understand outside of themselves, experiences that they should, they need to be open to so that they can help be better citizens of our, of our city, of our state, of our planet. And so I hope to, to, that I can continue to do that with my children and that they will, they will use that in their lives.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Seeing none, we will proceed to our first round of voting. You have the ballot instructions as last time in the message from Meta. So please click that link and fill out your vote. Abby, I think it's you that will read the results when you have them.
All six of them. And so Commissioner Clements voted for Erica Zer. Commissioner Harder voted for Erica Zer. Commissioner Nordine voted for Erica Zer. Commissioner Lyons voted for Justin Hendrickson. And I got ahead of myself here, sorry. Commissioner Bika voted for Mr. Parks and Commissioner Johnson voted for Erica Zer. So there's one, two, three, four votes for Erica Zer. So that would mean Ms. Zer would be our newest school board commissioner.
Well, then we have no need of additional rounds of voting. Congratulations, Erica. We look forward to you joining us on the board. Thank you to Justin and Omar for your willingness to serve. We look forward to seeking your help with the district as we move forward. Our next item in the agenda is the retirement window.
I believe, Tim, that that would be you.
Then take it away.
Excellent. So I think we'll just wait for Marissa to pull up the PowerPoint for us. As she's doing that, I will just jump in and begin. So the reason that this is coming before the board tonight, obviously with everything that's happened within the past few months with the global pandemic, the mandated school closures, at-home learning, there has been lots of discussion about how we can go about, in one, and planning for, obviously planning for the fall. And in the other, and looking out for retirees that still have the potential to make a decision about the 2020, 2021 school year. And so, thank you, Marissa. If you could move on to slide three. Thank you. So slide three shows us is for certified staff members. Certified staff members are the only group other than administrators who have a deadline for submitting a notice for their intent to retire. And so as you can see, February 1st is the deadline for certified staff members to notify the district that they intend to retire at the end of the current school year, indicating that they don't plan to return for the beginning of the next school year. In the slide, you can tell that based upon past bargained agreements and language changes along the way, that the criteria for early retirement, depending on your hire date along the way, that the criteria has changed numerous times depending on an employee's hire date. So employees who are hired prior to July 1 of 2004 have to be age 55, have 25 minutes of teaching experience and 15 years of those years have to be within the Eau Claire School District. And then you can see that prior to July 1 of 2008, there's three different sets of criteria depending on age. And then July 1 of 2008 and later, there's another set of criteria. So just in case anybody was interested in what that actually means for retirement criteria, I just wanted to make sure that it was presented to you so that you can see that there is some different sets for people depending on their hire into the district date. Thank you, Marissa. So the rationale that we have for looking to expand the timeline for folks looking to retire, Marissa, if you could just go to the next slide, please. Thanks. So when you think about retirement planning, for many people, this is, this is a lifetime event. You know, you think about how early in your career or in your lifetime that you start planning for retirement and saving for retirement. It's a, it's a financial component. There's a health component that's involved for many people that determines when or if they have to retire or when or how they're going to have to look at retirement. Their family and spouse plays into that as well. And then their current work position, what is it they're currently doing? Is it a physical job that they have to be able to say that they're retiring at a specific point because they can no longer do the work? Multiple things come into play in terms of retirement planning for people. And that plan goes over years and years and years and years of their life as they look to determine whether or not they're going to retire. Next slide, please. So when we look at what's happened here within the past several months with mandated school closures and at-home learning in response to COVID-19, there was an immediate implementation about how everybody's job and their expectations changed. There's a great impact on our employees as well as their family members. And that might have related to health and it might not have. It certainly related to everybody's stress level. We've heard that numerous times and we've all experienced it ourselves. There was a gigantic learning curve for everybody related to virtual learning components. Whether that's our actual teachers teaching that piece, whether it's our teachers teaching that piece to their students at home, whether it's being a parent at home, trying to figure that piece out. There are so many components in the virtual learning piece. And depending on which hat you're wearing at that point in time, those expectations change for you. So that learning curve affected everybody differently depending on which hat you're wearing at the point in time that you're serving in that virtual learning component. And then there's the unknown piece that comes into play for the 2020, 2021 school year. So when people looked at retiring at the end of this school year or next school year, that decision was made back in February or prior to February 1st of this school year. None of these things had occurred yet. None of these pieces were in place. And all of that planning that had gone into their decision to retire and that all happened over the course of many years of their life and career and nothing related to the global pandemic, pandemic or mandated school closures and at-home learning came into play to their decision. So we currently have 18 certified staff members who submitted their notice to retire at the end of this school year. That's not very many. We have an additional 30 that meet the requirements that I went through with you back on the third slide that if given the opportunity, they meet the requirements that, that I had illustrated for you. That if we open that window, they might, for any one of the multitude of reasons that I presented, they might now say, yep, if I would have known back on February 1st what I know now, I might have a different decision. And we think that it's important to give them a chance to make that different decision. Whether it's for a family member, whether it's for themselves, whether it's for the fear of what might be coming in the fall or just the uncertainty in knowing that there isn't a defined plan. And there is going to be a lot of uncertainty for quite some time. And even when we have a defined plan, it might all change within a moment's notice depending on what happens. And there's a lot of people who aren't comfortable with the potential that we might not be able to come back to school face to face. Because that means another undefined set of time that they're going to be responsible for virtual learning and they're not comfortable with that. And on the flip side, they may be very uncomfortable with knowing that there's the potential that we do return face to face. And based upon the health components of themselves or a compromised family member at home, they're very uncomfortable with that component. And so if they have met the criteria to be able to retire and they have that option, but missed the deadline because they didn't know all this was happening, then we feel like we should be able to give them that opportunity to go back and say, had I known all that at the time, I certainly would have chosen differently, given that opportunity. So, Marissa, if we could go to the next slide, please. So the recommendation at this point in time would be to allow for a non precedent-setting opportunity for the certified staff members who met the early retirement eligibility criteria as of July 1st of 2020, I'm sorry, January 1st of 2020, I lied again, February 1st of 2020, the option to retire prior to the 2020, 2021 school year. So again, very unusual circumstances. The language is very clear that if you don't submit your notice before the established deadline, there, there are no exceptions. And that's because all of the budgeting and staffing is done based upon that deadline. So there are major decisions that happen as a result of that deadline. However, all of the decisions are currently still very much up in the air in terms of what that looks like for next year. And we're going to have to continue to make significant changes based upon what the state's going to be sharing with us and what next year is going to look like. So to provide these potential 30 staff members, another opportunity to meet that deadline. In this situation, having it be non precedent-setting, they're, they're not getting any change of our planning because all of the planning has changed anyway. So we feel it would be appropriate to provide them another opportunity if it fits their current situation. And there might not be anybody who wants to take that opportunity. But if there is, we feel it would be appropriate to allow them that chance. Any questions?
Thank you, Kay. It does seem like an easy gesture if someone is in that group and feeling uncertain about the future or unsafe with our limited knowledge of how the pandemic will react over the coming months. So thank you. Questions and comments from board members?
Yeah, I have two, if I could.
Yes, Dr. Johnson.
So what would be the, what would be the plan so for, in addition to those 18, any of the other 30 were to apply and take advantage of this, this allowance? What's the, what's the plan for those particular positions? I, I'm curious, are, are, are you interested in using those retirement positions to potentially offset potential budget cuts or how, how, how will that work?
That's a great question. And if we had a concrete staffing plan going forward, it'd be really easy to answer that. But because we have multiple staffing plans going forward based upon whether or not we're looking at coming back virtually or whether or not we're looking at coming back face to face or a combination of both of those, there's multiple staffing plans. And so if any of those 30 individuals chose to take advantage of this opportunity, their position would get plugged into each of those staffing plans. And we would look to figure out how that would, how that would play into each of those scenarios and then work it through each one of those plans.
All right. And my, 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 my second question would be, is, is this request, is this a, a one-time allowance? And following next academic year, the school just goes back to the February 1? Or is this for the foreseeable future, given the, the nature of whether it be pandemic circumstances and our potentially upcoming budgetary constraints? Is this a continuous request to allow this allowance for foreseeable future? I guess it wasn't clear in the, in the presentation if this is just a, a one-time for that, for the next upcoming year? Or is this a recurring allowance that's being requested?
Yep. This particular recommendation is just a one-time allowance. The, the non precedent setting would be that it's just this. And going forward, we would go back to what the regular handbook language says. That doesn't mean that if come next February 1st, we're in a similar situation, we wouldn't look to do something similar. Or like you said, if there are budget constraints that would make us look at either this again or something else of a similar nature. You know, we would have to be open to all of those. But at this point in time, this recommendation is a one-time window reopening for these 30 particular individuals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I'd just like to express my support for this idea. It sounds, it sounds like a good thing to do and a good time to do it.
Hearing no further comments or questions, I would hear a motion to approve or reject this recommendation.
I'd make the motion.
This is Josh.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the non precedent-setting extension of the retirement window. Let's do a roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
The motion carries. We'll move on to item 7.3, employment, employee handbook modifications. Kay, I imagine this is you again.
It is. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your vote on the previous agenda item. It's much appreciated. Employee handbook, handbook language modification for hourly staff layoff. As you know, we normally bring handbook language modifications to you in the spring for updates for July 1. And in most cases, it's, it's a one-time situation and we don't come back to you again until the following spring. This particular handbook language modification that deals with hourly staff layoff language was recommended, recommended to us by our school legal counsel, which, as you can imagine, has to do specifically with the recent pandemic and the mandated school closures. And because it came directly from the school legal counsel and was recommended by our school's attorney. As a result of that, it did not go through our regular process, you know, through the employee relations committee for any kind of vetting or input because it came as a recommendation directly from, from legal. So it has not followed our normal channels, but rather came right from the district's legal counsel. So Marissa, if you could go on to the next slide, please. Thank you. Obviously, this has to do with high quality staff and that's how it pertains to our strategic plan. Next slide. Thank you. Nope, this is good. Thanks. So when it comes to the rationale for this modification, the pandemic, in pandemic situations or mandated school closures that have to do with similar situations, it's important that the district has both flexibility and immediacy and that we're able to act in that fashion. Our recent situation revealed that our current language, which requires a 30-day notice for us to be able to lay off any hourly employees, didn't give the district either one of these pieces in, to be able to address a short-term layoff. And that kind of hampered us and tied our hands in our current situation. So as a result of that, that's what's really bringing forward the recommendation from legal counsel to make this modification. Uh, next slide, please. So the modification will take effect in the handbook in part three, which affects hourly employees and it'll be section three, which pertains to the layoff language. The high points of what you'll see in what's being recommended changes the language from a 30-day notice down to the actual language in it indicates a minimum of one day. Now, obviously, that would be for majorly extreme situations, but ideally it would be somewhere in the ballpark of seven to 14 days. We would try to give as much notice as possible. But what we're really trying to plan for is if we come back in the fall, again, now we're looking at specifically, you know, the current situation that we're in. And let's say that, you know, one building has an outbreak and we need to close down that specific building. If our current language still existed, we wouldn't be able to address the need for that particular building to have layoffs for an entire month. And so the idea would be that we would try to give as much of a, as much of an advance notice as possible. But the recommendation is to have the language indicate one day for extreme situations. But again, ideally, it would be, we would try to give as much notice as possible. Seven to 14 days would be typical. But, but the recommendation is to have it be one day. Have it be one day in the document. But additionally, for the protection of our employees that would be affected, they would continue to be eligible for health and dental premiums for their insurance for the month past the month that the layoff goes into effect. So they would finish the month of the layoff and then the following month would also, they would also have their insurances taken care of, just like as if we're working. All of their accrued unleaved balances would remain intact during their layoff period. And then the selection of employees for layoff, the language indicates that it would be by classification and department or building or both as appropriate. And again, that language is modified to be able to accommodate what's needed. Should it be a particular building or or if it's the entire district, it's, it's really meant to be able to depend on the situation and what's needed for required work in the district and then specifically student need. If the entire district isn't shut down, but it's a building or a couple of buildings, are we able to redeploy some staff to certain areas? And if so, then what areas are those? And then the layoff would come into being able to do it in justification of student need, which is why it's classification of departments, buildings or both, if it's if it's appropriate to look at it that way. So Marissa, if we could have you pull up the actual language, we can see where those changes are. So this is the actual handbook language and you can see the red is where the modifications are. The first one where you see it's changed from board to district, I, I think that was something that was missed previously, actually, because down here in 3.02, you can see it says the district. So I think that that was just something that was missed previously. So indicating that the district will give as much notice versus at least 30 calendar days. So as much notice as of layoff as is possible, but not less than one day. So again, the focus is to provide as much notice as we can, but it's not going to be less than a day. Again, that's where the seven to 14 days comes in. Everything else remains the same. The benefit piece here talks about the fact, like I said, that benefits go through the month of the layoff plus the following month. And then after that, employees that were eligible for insurance are able to go on to COBRA and that they don't lose any of their accrued leave balances, that those all remain in place during that period of time. If you could scroll down, please. Thank you. In letter C, indicating that's just changing dismissed to laid off. And then the following indication indicates or states that the layoff shall then be by classification and building and or departments, depending on which the building is, as is appropriate, which again indicates how the selection for layoffs would occur. And again, that's to make sure that depending on whether we're talking the entire district or if it's building specific or several buildings, trying the best we can to be able to redeploy staff if that need is there. And if it is, then looking at it by what those needs are and who can be redeployed if necessary. And if not, or if they can, then looking at, you know, the needs of the students. So I believe, Marissa, if you scroll down, I don't believe that there's any more modifications in the section. I think everything else remains the same. Yes. So those were the modifications. There aren't any other modifications past that. And again, those were requested to be made by a legal counsel so that the district has the flexibility and the immediacy to act. Should there be further needs for the district to take action and close down either buildings and or the district as a result of something similar to what we're currently experiencing? Questions?
Thank you, Kay. Questions from board members?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question if I could.
Sure.
I, I don't consult with a legal counsel very much. I think that's intentional, I guess, on my part, but I, I'm just kind of curious. 30 days reduced to one? Uh, that's a, that's an unbelievable, unbelievable jump. And I guess why I'm, I'm a little bit troubled by that, given the fact that secondarily, you have ideally, it would be seven to 14. Why wouldn't you, you guys just go with seven days? I guess for me, if you, if we think about the process that it would take of someone losing or being laid off of their job and being able to go through their process of trying for unemployment, all that can't be done in a day. And given the current circumstances now, that really can't be done within seven to 14. I, I understand the reduction. I guess I'm, I'm a, I'm a little bit troubled with in the legal counsel's recommendation, was there, was there an in-between number between 30 and one? Or did they just, did they just say one was the, the best route to take?
So Marissa, if you could pull up the language again? Thank you. So the, so the language is changing to that the district will give as much notice of layoff as possible, but not less than one day. So what this is saying is that this is the notification that there's a layoff coming. So what the language currently says is that we need to provide basically in the school world, because the average month has 20 working days. So this would be six weeks' notice. So the current language indicates that we would have to give an employee six weeks' advance notice to let them know that they're going to be laid off. And so what they're recommending is that we change that to say that we're going to provide as much advanced notice as possible, but not less than one day. So when we're targeting seven to 14 days, that would be what, two to, two to, two to three weeks versus the six weeks? And so when he, when he recommends not less than one day, meaning that we're just not going to walk into your classroom and say, okay, so there's an issue and, you know, you're now laid off. So one extreme was the six weeks, the other extreme is we're not just going to walk in today and say, don't come back tomorrow. That, that there will be as much advance notice as possible, but it's not going to be that we're going to walk in and say, you know, as of tomorrow, you don't have a job anymore and you're on layoff. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kay, before I open it back up to my other colleagues, I, I just want to make sure, as I read it, it says 30 calendar days, which would then be four weeks and two days. It's not, it's not 30 workdays.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, we're talking, I mean, I agree, Dr. Johnson, that one day seems a little extreme and I'm, I'm a little concerned about. I think the district has, in my experience, always worked to help its employees as much as possible, especially during this time. I want to commend you again for all the work that you've done to support and keep our, our employees working. It does strike a little bit of that there's no you know, minimum there, other than the one day. Maybe if there, that might make me feel better if there's something like a clause, you know, in extreme circumstances or in you know, emergency circumstances, it may be as little as one day. But anyhow, I mostly just wanted to clarify that we're talking about calendar days as opposed to workdays.
Thank you.
Other comments and questions? Commissioner Lyons?
I, I'm interested if, how's my, how's my audio?
I can hear you fine. Thank you.
Great. Employees are given advanced notice whether or not the layoffs are partial or full? Or are they not aware at the time of layoff? If they're coming back or if they're going to be laid off for an extended period of time? And the next question, or probably more of a statement, is that the language that the district will give as much notice of layoff is as possible is very loose language. And I, I'm concerned that, I don't know how to define that. And I would think that there are all kinds of exceptions and and times at which you could argue that the notice of layoff could be two, three, four weeks. And then the argument would be on the district to be, to be saying, no, as much time of layoff as possible was one day because and then need to explain why it was one day. I, I, I actually like the hard number as opposed to the language that really is kind of loose-ended.
Other comments? Commissioner Harder, I believe you had your mic unmuted a moment ago.
Yeah, thanks. Kay, I think you had mentioned, if I heard right, at the early in the presentation about not following a normal procedure of, I, I think it was the employee relations committee of sort of getting some input from there. Was there a reason that this was needing to go at, maybe at a faster pace or something? Or would it be possible to contemplate running this by through those normal protocols?
Yep. We didn't do that partially because it recommended by the attorney's office or the attorney, it sounds like the attorney general. It was recommended by legal counsel. And in most cases, we usually do it the other way around. It comes from the staff and then we run it by the attorney to say, can we do this? Where this way it's coming from the attorney saying, you really need to do this because the district is in jeopardy of when you're not doing this, because in this past situation, obviously, we were in a situation where we didn't have the flexibility and the immediacy that the district needed to be able to make some modifications to staffing, should the board have decided to that or decided that they wanted to do that. And so, and then the other piece was, is that if, if we get to the point that we do need to make some changes and this isn't in place, then we're still in the same spot that we were in previously to the recommendation being made by the school's attorney, that we don't have this in place. And so there was a sense of immediacy to be able to get this approved by the board sooner than later so that it's in place, we can communicate it out to employees and everybody understands what the situation is. So that should there be a need to actually act on it, that the language is approved and everybody's educated as to what that language is, so there aren't any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick follow-up then. Do you have any sense of the kind of timeframe it might take to, to get some feedback through the normal channels?
I mean, it, it would be same way that we do things on board teams meetings. The other issue is that the school board doesn't meet again until July 20th. And that, that causes a big lapse in time to be able to make any changes and communicate out to employees.
There may need to be some, there's a possibility of needing that even between that interim period.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Tim, if I can summarize, if there aren't any other questions or comments, it sounds like the biggest hurdle that I heard was the lack of stop dead date on the 3.02 in terms of the amount of time that the district will give, going from 30 days to having it be open-ended. Is, does that sound?
I, I think that's, I'm hearing reticence from my colleagues and a little from myself that the, you know, give as much notice of layoff is, is a little bit soft. There's not a, and then I think there is a little bit of feeling like one day seems very sudden. The district would do that except in dire need and I, I personally understand the, the need for flexibility in, especially in situations like you're talking about, if we had an individual building or school. But it does seem you know, like the kind of thing that would not give much consolation to employees looking at this handbook and saying, you know, that the district then has the power to just you know, that the district then has the power to just, on a day's notice, in any situation, uh, lay people, lay hourly employees off. So yes, I, I guess to summarize, I think you're right, that, that, that's, that seems to be the roadblock for, uh, my colleagues here. I, you know, we haven't heard from Commissioners Clements or Vika for sure, but from the rest of us, it does seem to be the issue.
Is there, is that, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm, I think you, you cut out. I didn't hear what you just said. And now I think we're just staring at each other to see who will talk first.
I didn't know if somebody else was trying to speak at the same time. Um, so what came from the attorney was obviously the language that you have there with, um, what I had spoken about and put in the slide presentation, that ideally it would be seven to fourteen days, with the one day being for extreme cases. So would it, would it behoove the board to replace the one day with the seven to fourteen days or somewhere in between there? So instead of the thirty days, we have something in between seven to fourteen? Not that we ever like to wordsmith in the middle of a board meeting, but my fear would be that if we don't finalize the language, um, that this is going to wind up being an August project. And that was what we're trying to avoid.
Sure.
Tim, yeah, yeah, Tim, if I could, I, 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 I would say, uh, for me to, uh, considerable, consider a more favorable, favorable vote for this, uh, the, the seven to fourteen would have to be, uh, inserted for me. Uh, as it currently stands, I, I, I just actually cannot support, uh, support the, uh, agenda.
And just to clarify, would you be, if it said something along the lines of the, the district will give a minimum of seven to fourteen days' notice of layoff, uh, but if, would you be okay if there was a, you know, in emergency circumstances that may be reduced to one day? Or is, or is it the one day is right out for you?
I, I just, I, I, I kind of have a, a, I, I've still, I'm still having a hard time, uh, thinking that if, and then I don't make decisions as it relates to HR, but I, I would assume that the, the, the financial, uh, situations that our, our HR department would have a little bit more foresight than a day. And so I, I'm, I realize that bad things are happening. And so for me, it, 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 it's a seven or fourteen, but like I said, it's a, it, that's kind of where, where I, I'm struggling with. I, I just, I, I would, I would hope that, you know, whatever financial modeling that's used to project, uh, budgetary constraints moving forward, that, uh, that our, that our, our financial decision makers would have, you would have the foresight to be able to make those decisions with more than a day in advance. And so for me, I'm, that's just where I continue just to struggle with right now.
Okay. Commissioner Clements?
Um, you know, I think that, that, you know, the one day is in there. And while I think that I, I have some trust in our, in our current staff, that it's going to be, that any sort of, uh, decision would be much more planned in advance. Um, I think we have to provide some security, um, for staff, that it's not going to be, you know, don't come back to work tomorrow, you know, essentially. Um, and also, so, so that, I think, has to be addressed in some manner. Um, but also, you know, what, what does, what do we have the ability to do by emergency order, you know? So it, I assume that if it's going to be such a short turnaround like that, that, that doesn't involve some sort of disciplinary action, that there's some sort of financial emergency going on, um, and certain non-essential staff are going to be laid off. Um, is, is there some other provision, such as an emergency order, that allows that kind of flexibility to occur if it's necessary?
There is not, which is why the, the recommendation was being made that this language be changed. So, but you're right, Commissioner Clements, that's what, that's what this is pertaining to. And so back to Dr. Johnson's point, you're right, we do have ample data that provides us information that we would know well in advance if we needed to lay staff off due to a reduction in force because we don't have as many students in the class or we don't, you know, whatever those situations are. Yes, we know that well in advance of thirty calendar days. So the language as it currently sits is fine for any typical school year. But if we come back to school in the fall and suddenly a fourth grade classroom comes up with six students that are identified positive for COVID, the recommendation from the CDC or from the Health Department is that that building needs to be shut down, yep, that would be a day's notice. So I wouldn't be able to plan in advance for that by any formula or pre-advanced determination in the HR world. But there's nothing I could do to be able to prepare and plan for that, which is the one day, the, the one day language that the attorney had provided. That it wouldn't be less than a one day that we would be coming and saying, you know, there's nowhere to redeploy you, um, based on what it is you do for the district and therefore there's no other opportunity or no other option other than to lay you off. So those would be the, uh, the situations in which we'd be looking to utilize the language. Otherwise, you're right, in a, in a normal year, we would have ample notice to be able to let somebody know that, that there isn't an opportunity for them to have a position.
Let's stick with Commissioner Clements real quick to, to finish up, and then we'll go to you, Commissioner Lyons.
Thanks. Uh, so follow-up question, is there, um, I mean, maybe opening Pandora's box, I would be careful with, with this, but is there, um, the powers out there that, that we can put in our, in our handbook such to, to allow for, um, emergency declarations, even if it's limited in scope um, to a particular facility, um, that would have, that, you know, so that, I'm, I'm trying to find out a way that would enable such flexibility in the kind of emergency situation that would be foreseen as potentially used. Um, but also giving, giving staff and the, um, board members some assurity that it's, it's going to have to come to that. Um, it's not, and it's not going to be used, you know, for more isolated purposes.
So are you asking about like a totally separate provision outside of this language that indicates?
Right.
Specific to what it is we're talking about?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to make policy needlessly complicated. Um, but I think when it comes to staff and employment situations, I think we need to be, um, have a great degree of, of certainty in this, in the security of employment, um, to the degree of practical. And if we have a, a provision where if someone reads this, that they could be laid off in a day, um, even though it's understood that it's, that's going to be an extreme situation, um, you know, I, I think it's, it's still a little too open for interpretation, I guess, without being more direct, the way that it's, the way that it's written.
You, Commissioner Lyons?
So I, I'm going to postulate that the seven to fourteen days is calendar days. So it would be a week to two weeks' notice? Would that be?
Yes.
Would that be possible? Okay. And I would be comfortable with a one to two week, um, notice of layoff. The part that I'm, that I really would still not be comfortable with is the open-ended, um, notice of layoff, as much notice of layoff as is possible, because I think that that, that's so broad. So the, the seven to fourteen days makes me quite comfortable. Um, but I would want to strike that, the, the language as is possible, but not less than one day.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Uh, Dr. Vika, we haven't heard from you. Do you have comments or thoughts?
I would really like to see the original language as Commissioner Lyons suggests and have it changed from thirty calendar days to fourteen calendar days.
So I'm starting to hear maybe some agreement around the virtual, I guess, table, that perhaps changing the language from thirty to fourteen would be something that the board could support. I'm seeing a nod from Commissioner Harder, who hasn't directly weighed in on that, but, in the interest of moving forward, Kay, is that something that, uh, we would, I don't, maybe I don't have a direct question. I, I'm sure we'd need a motion to do that. Um, so I guess if, if that's the case, I would look for a motion to approve the changes, uh, with the exception of, uh, to approve the changes as written with the exception of changing three point zero two, the first sentence, to be the district will give at least fourteen calendar days' notice of layoff.
Period.
So would anyone, uh, be willing to make that motion and second?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Lyons, is there a second?
This is Josh Els.
Moved and seconded. Uh, this is a financial piece as well, uh, so we better do a roll call.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
And this is on the modified, uh, the modified version, correct?
Correct. This is the, uh, changes as presented with the exception that the first sentence under RIF layoff notice will read, "The district will give at least fourteen calendar days' notice of layoff."
That's, that's a yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Maybe I lost track. Did we get Dr. Vika?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, uh, so that motion passes. We can now move on. I'm going to pre-apologize for as late as we're going to go tonight. We have several items left and I'm committed to getting to that referendum survey tonight. Uh, but we'll move to the Eau Claire Virtual School cap.
Good evening. Uh, Maeda, or not Maeda, Marissa, I think you are going to, I'm going to share my screen, yes? So if you could let me know when?
It looks like you're ready to share. You have the ball. Well, you're not shared, but it looks like you're ready to.
I'm not quite sure how you know that, but I'm trusting you. There we go.
There's a little blue ball by the headset by your name.
All right, um, let me get myself into presentation mode, which I just have to do a little flip-flopping here. And I'm going to ask Marissa or Maeda, am I, and anyone else, are you seeing the full screen?
You look great, Jim.
All right, thank you. All right, um, so I understood that the board is interested in expanding the virtual school cap. Right now, uh, we will go over what the cap numbers are. Um, and my understanding is that there's, uh, given the, the school closures and the uncertainty regarding the pandemic and next year, uh, the board wanted to explore potential options. Um, you will finish with this presentation, not with a singular recommendation, but basically, hopeful, I hope that you walk away with understandings what the variables are um, and the, in the way the tension works between those variables. So, um, as we've mentioned before, um, and we did our presentation, uh, back earlier this spring, uh, we talked about the alignment of the strategic plan with the virtual school. And we talked about the way to, uh, academic achievement to reach, um, new students and new ways to meet academic outcomes in, in the safe, uh, and supportive environments for some of our students to succeed, um, that the virtual school to meet their social, emotional growth, um, provides an environment that, um, is very enticing to this, uh, to many students, um, for a variety of reasons. Um, and also for collaborative cultures, there's required collaboration between our district departments and our secondary schools in both the development of the school, but also in the identification, um, and placement of students. Um, sometimes we find students that are interested in the virtual school end up going back to our brick and mortar school and vice versa. Um, for high-quality staff, this is, uh, as, as we know, we've been through a rapid learning curve in terms of, um, our staff, uh, learning to do virtual programming. And we've relied in the virtual school primarily on staff not hired by the district. And next year will be our first year with the, the grade four and five classroom of twenty-two, which we will remind you again about this evening. And finally, um, the partnerships with families, um, that the school has a component that connects with many community agencies. And the, uh, virtual school board, uh, governance board, uh, does involve quite a few partners that we have, uh, around the district. So the mission, we'd just like to remind, this is part of the, uh, part of the bylaws for the virtual school is provide the innovative educational path. Um, we knew that the board, or that the school board wanted to see the virtual school um, as an opportunity to re-engage families that had left the district to seek virtual schools in other districts, um, or, and, and away from, from the Eau Claire area school district boundaries. Um, while that was the original intent, we've also, we found that the virtual school has provided an opportunity to, uh, to, on the continuous services, it is, it has created broader continuum of services for our students that we had not had before. And one of the, uh, things we'd like to remind, uh, the need for it is that students will either have a preference for non-traditional learning or they will have interruptions to their learning. And sometimes the school is able to make those adjustments. Um, and a student will find success in the traditional setting, which goes to the right, or they need to continue on a different path. And we have a variety of options. The virtual school is one of them. We have off-campus, we have other settings, McKinley, um, and we have a few other options even outside of that. And sometimes students will stay in that non-traditional setting, but sometimes we find that the students will end up going back to the traditional setting. Uh, we have students that are in the virtual school this year that are returning back to our brick and mortar schools. So there's some fluidity. And we're starting to learn more and more through our experience what the nature of virtual schooling is in terms of enrollment patterns and, and, uh, the fluidity that I, I just mentioned that does exist. We also talked about the multi-level systems of support and the structures that we put in place, uh, to provide students, uh, to be successful in the virtual school. Um, it is a very, it, it has many things that are very similar to a regular school. We had graduation last Wednesday night. It was live, it was pretty exciting for our two graduates. Um, but we also have things that work a little bit differently because of the asynchronous nature of it and also the fact that we don't always see our students each day. So when we approve the cap, when the board approved it, uh, in the 2021, we approved sixty-four slots for this last year, or for this coming year, I'm sorry. Um, we have twenty-two that are in grades four and five, uh, and forty-two that are, uh, in grade six through twelve. This is an expansion and the numbers, again, these, and this was this last year, the zero and twenty-eight. The numbers for costs are going to, you're going to see these are going to change. These are what were proposed to the board. We've gotten an update from Pearson on those numbers and we'll share that in just a moment. Our, of our twenty-eight, right now there are twenty-three in the school. And we're going to talk about that number, uh, because one of the things we're going to, um, share with the board is, and we're learning and it's really interesting, we have these conversations with other virtual schools around the state. One of our most common ones we talk to is over at Appleton, which has one of the most successful, uh, virtual schools, in our opinion, in the state. And they, uh, you'll hear this term called under-enrollment. And typically, the number that you think you're going to have, you'll, you'll tend to see this under-enrollment of about fifteen to twenty percent. And that's really about where we are. So, um, we have numbers for next year. These numbers, twenty-eight, um, grade six through twelve is seven different grade levels. So we, when the number twenty-eight was picked, because on average, there will be four students per grade level. It doesn't work out exactly four for each grade level, but that's how we get to the number twenty-eight. And the number forty-two averages to six students per grade level. And so we'll show how that's going to, how the plan is for that to slowly step over, up over time. The number twenty-two, this was one of the lower numbers on the, um, we know that in the grades four and five, the, um, the student, uh, class size ranges from twenty-one to twenty-nine. So the number twenty-two was selected on the lower end of that because we knew that it'd be a challenge to, um, do that this next year with one of our own teachers. So the first line, twenty-two students will be taught by an Eau Claire area school district teacher. Uh, we will be actually interviewing for that position in the next couple of weeks. Um, the number forty-two will be still taught by Pearson hired teachers. Um, and we'll talk about why those differences exist, like why pick one versus the other in just a moment. What we presented to you back in March also was showing you the revenue versus expenses. And there really was quite a bit of revenue surplus. Part of this is a lot because that we've been able to absorb staffing, uh, for all the services that wrap around the virtual school with an existing position. We're starting to get big enough, though, where that's not going to, uh, be possible, uh, moving forward. Uh, we'll talk about counseling as one example right now, where, um, we're actually able to purchase that this next year through savings in another area. Um, but we, we- Um, but we, we are able to provide, um, a, what appears to be a surplus. And as we get bigger though, uh, we're going to show you some of the variables. Um, I can't give you an exact cost on it, but we'll show you the variables that will be at play. Um, and one of the big ones that'll come into play is special education and English learner services that we might have to employ. Um, so when we looked at some of our key dates. And these are the dates we shared with you. And the reason why I'm sharing these dates with you is I'm going to show you in just a moment. Uh, the application pattern of our, of our, uh, families over the past several weeks. We're going to show you what happened with grade four and five families. When, when they decided to submit their application and we're going to do the same thing with grades six through twelve, and we're going to show you how those dates. Match up with the, um, with the lottery closing. So this date right here, Thursday, April ninth is one, is when the lottery closed for grades four and five. The six twelve lottery closed on January thirtieth, so that's another date we're going to share with you. And then, excuse me, the collective non-resident lottery, which was any non-residents plus resident students that didn't register or enroll earlier. Or apply for the lottery earlier. Pardon me, well, um, that date was May. Was May, so we will show you how, uh. And the, uh, lottery applications, uh, corresponded with those dates. So the virtual board. Had a plan for expansion. I'm sorry, I just got to stop for a second. A little to go in the throat. And you can see the plan over time was to add. The four or five grade this year and then stay there for the next two years after. And slowly step up the grade six, twelve by another two students per grade level. In the, um, each sequential year. So you'll see this number going up by fourteen. Which is an additional two students per grade level. And so it was this slow increase over time that we had looked at. One of the reasons for doing this. Was when you look at students in the secondary level, the big challenge you have is certification. At the elementary level, you can have someone certify that can really cover all your different courses that students are going to experience. And at the secondary level, you have required certifications, for example, an English teacher needs to have that. Certification, not just in English, but at the right grade level. Um, a biology teacher. And science is one of the toughies, and I say this as a science teacher, and I know our school board president is as well. Um, you know, if you want to teach physics, you have to be certified in physics. You want to teach chemistry, you have to be certified in chemistry. So it gets a little bit dicey. Um, even some of our social sciences, uh, uh, have a challenge in that area as well. So typically with the secondary level, there is a need to have a critical mass of students to be able to support programming. And that number, the number that keeps coming up is around two hundred and fifty kids. Once you're at about two hundred and fifty kids, you really then can, uh, successfully have full-time staff. Now, we can also have part-time staff at the virtual school and what that might look like, and we've seen in other, um, virtual settings that are shared by, where a school district has brick and mortar. And virtual students is you might teach that chemistry teacher might teach four classes. In the brick and mortar school and then might teach one section at the virtual school. So they might actually just stay right in their classroom. And then dedicate that one hour to the, the virtual program. And you can do that for other ones. Uh, sorry, did, third question?
Jim, if I could, uh, uh, just jump in, the, what you just mentioned, does that, uh, account for the new, uh? Uh, D P I, uh, requirements that actually for those content areas that you just mentioned? That it, it's really just for generalists now? And so how, moving, moving forward though, how does that pertain to kind of this concern about just. Certain cognitive errors, because it will actually be dependent on the, uh, licensing institution, whether or not. Uh, generalist science individuals have to have a cognate. So I'm just curious, is, was that factored into? Kind of how you consider who will be, uh, being able to provide this level of instruction?
Right. So, and I kind of warned Kay that we might get into some licensing thing. And so Kay wants to jump in. She can in just a moment, but right now that's actually the, the complication of licensing at the secondary level has been one of the reasons why we haven't really gone down that road yet. Uh, just because it is, gets a lot more complex, which is why we wanted to just do some slow growth over time. Before we started to bring that level of complexity into the programming, just to get our feet underneath us. And we thought if we're going to start anywhere, let's start at the elementary level where this, where the certification issues are much more simple than they are at the secondary level. Does that help? And Kay, I don't know if you want to jump in, or I think if that covered it, but I think, um, I'll just pause it in case she does. I'm going to take that as, uh, let it keep rolling, Jim. Um, so this was the governance's, uh, board plan, that what would have been shared with the school board was just these two, uh, columns, uh, the twenty nineteen, twenty and the twenty 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 one. Um, on the backend here was what they'd been looking at over time is just to try to get some success level and really. The, the, uh, so this is where I'm going to try to explain some things. I'm going to, you'll see it in writing and coming up real soon as well. The, the, um. There's two ways to offer, primary ways to offer virtual, well, actually about three of them. Um, but two big ones, and one is where you pay a vendor. Like we do Pearson and you pay for two things. You pay for content that they've developed. And you pay for the actual instructor, which is what we've been doing at the secondary level. Now that doesn't mean we do nothing. As a matter of fact, there's a significant amount of effort on our end in terms of counseling. Um, trying to make sure students are enrolled, checking in on students. So there's a lot of work that goes in on the backend, but instructionally. You pay for the instruction by the teacher and for the content. What we are planning to do at grades four and five is just pay for the content. And then we hire the teacher. So Pearson has all of this content and then the teacher goes in and they're pulling. Different, uh, uh, elements out of the content that are created, that are designed for. Uh, someone might say like, well, what makes their content any more different than ours? It is tailored for virtual learning for an online environment, which is one of the things right now that we are experiencing and getting ready for summer. By being an online, uh, for, for the district this summer, uh, we have to provide time for our staff to do that preparation because. Teaching face-to-face and teaching online is different. And so you have to modify materials. There's more videos that, that you're making, uh, different. Resources that just have a little bit, uh, allow for a student to be more independent, but that requires a lot more planning upfront by the instructor. So the, the twenty twenty one, this number twenty two, those students will be taught using Pearson content. And then, but with an E C H D instructor. The intent then was at the following year. That the, the instructor would be developing grade four material. Um, and would teach Pearson fifth grade content, fifth grade students and, and district content. To, to the fourth grade students, and then in the next year it would be all district content. So that we would develop over time that ability to create our own content. Um, the cost actually is actually cheaper than eleven hundred, which I'll show you in just a moment, but it was an, I, part of it was so that not only would. The, one of the things that we heard is a positive from our families and we've got, we, we did a survey. It was very positive feedback. Um, was that local connection and knowing the Oakley area school district has a quality product that it puts out. So, understanding that Pearson was selected because it is high quality, but we wanted to try to mirror as much of our programs as we could. So in the first year, we'll use Pearson content and then slowly evolve towards district content as we get more skilled in doing virtual, uh, instruction on this platform. The revenue and expenses, if we do add additional students. So something to keep in mind is the revenue, um, per new student. So if, if a student enrolls in the district, we'll see these dollars open and roll then, and this is. Ten thousand thirteen is resident students. Now, if a student switches from North or Memorial or, or Belong or South or, or North Star into the six twelve program. Um, that will not be new dollars because that's just shifting the existing student dollars, um, the revenue. Um, but if a student is homeschool, goes to a private school, uh, they like, if they live in the district and they go to a private school. Um, if they live in the district, they go to, um, their homeschool. And then they, or they go to a virtual school and then they come into the district. Um, these are dollars that the district would, would see the ten thousand thirteen. Now a student that was, like, for example, if a student was open and rolling out. Um, in the past, there, there roughly seven thousand some dollars would have been going out and some are roughly two and a half or so stay in. Um, so if a student had been opening and rolling out last year and they come back to us. Um, the, the amount that we lose, that we don't, all ten thousand doesn't come back because not all of it left in the first place. We have to keep in mind that, um, some of these numbers, um. Are, look appealing, but at the same time, we have to kind of look at where was a student last year? If they were still in our brick and mortar and they're staying in our brick and mortar. Um, we're not going to see a revenue change. Um, if they were open and rolled out, now they're opening and rolling in, it's just the open and roll out dollars that will come back to us. Um, but if they were living in the district and homeschooling or private schooling, then we would see that full amount being added. So that's the potential for revenue. We're going to talk about, um, and, and part of the reason why that matters is right now. Um, we have forty two slots at the secondary level and we have, uh, a broad around forty six or so kids on the waiting list. Ninety percent of those students currently, uh, this school year are in district schools. So only ten percent of those students are actually that have applied for our, that are on our waiting list are coming from outside of the district. So many of our students, it's more of a shift, uh, than seeing students from the outside coming in. Um, one of the things that we've realized is sometimes, uh, we might say, well, that isn't really helping the district financially, but sometimes we realize that. When they start having conversations with us, we are, uh, the virtual school sometimes keeps those families from leaving the district. They're looking for something else. Um, and so while sometimes we don't see an increase in, uh, in enrollment. Um, a student makes it what appears to be a sideways shift, what we've actually done is prevented a loss. So, um, so that, each one of these has a different story. So it's, it's real difficult to, you know, to, to say that this is going to, um, this, this decision will suddenly gain revenue. It may keep us from losing revenue. It may help us gain revenue. It may be a sideways move in revenue. On the expenses end, the, um, Pearson contracted learning platform and their teachers, that's where they teach and, and, um, and provide content. The cost is forty three, forty nine a year per student. So that number is a less than half of what you see for, um, and revenue, but we'll talk about how those, how that number will change in just a little bit, especially as we get bigger. Um, the actual cost is forty two fifty. Um, there's a ninety nine dollar cost for something that's called, um, live tutoring, which is, is a service that you add on to that because you want to be able to have the students. Be able to have one-on-one conversations with the, with the, um, remote teachers. The second line is that model where it's the Pearson contracted learning platform. This would be if. Um, if the student, if the teacher was our teacher. And not the Pearson teacher. So that would cost us, it is no longer eleven hundred dollars. Um, I like, I feel like, uh, I'm, I'm on a, a Black Friday sale. It's now five twenty five. We're not quite sure why the dollar went down or why it went down, but, uh, it just became cheaper in the last month for that content. It might just be that the, that we are not the only district having this conversation. And so they're trying to incentivize, uh, districts to use their platform. So it's five hundred and twenty five per student. There is a three hundred and fifty dollar cost per teacher to use that. And what that does is it allows the teacher in that platform to have a live conversation with the students. Um, that may seem like, well, like, and, and we could do that in, um, in teams, Microsoft Teams for free. Uh, but it does help sometimes to have those conversations within the platform that the students are using day in and day out, which would be that platform. So, um, so that, those would be the costs that if, if, um, so if we were to allow for district teachers to be teaching, we would be using that second line, that five twenty five per student. But the, whoops, I didn't mean to go back, wrong way. But the thing to keep in mind is then we actually have to buy the teacher. So, um, it's not like, oh, this is a, this is a real cheap cost. You still have to pay for. A teacher and typically the number that I hear is a teacher, one point O F T E costs about ninety three thousand dollars. Um, a teacher at the secondary level will teach five sections in the fall, five sections, sections in the spring. Um, so there are actually ten semester sections that are taught. So on average, a section of students will cost about nine thousand, three hundred dollars or one tenth of that. So you have to layer in, and, and that's why it's real difficult because you have to layer in, uh, that, that instructor's cost. Something else to keep in mind with both of these costs is they're not prorated. So once you purchase this, let's say you buy a hundred of these licenses for forty three, forty nine. And then suddenly, uh, we have a closure and it looks great. So we've got a hundred kids in there. Um, and then they start, and then all of a sudden, um, everyone's back learning face-to-face. Um, and all these students, if you can just envision them saying, we want to go back to the brick and mortar. Um, you don't get a refund. It doesn't get prorated. You're committed to that cost likewise with the five twenty five. So it's just something to keep in mind. What's happened this last year is we've had some ebb and flow of students in the program. And so, um, fortunately, when one left, another came in and, and it, the number just kept sitting right around twenty three. So it worked out real nicely that we didn't have to pay for any, um, any service that we weren't using. Um, this is that ninety three hundred dollars I was mentioning. So that's how we have that number for every point one F T E. So point one F T E again is one semester section. And again, your typical teacher, five section. For counseling, um, we, a counselor will, uh, will, a full load typically at the secondary level will be about three to a hundred to three hundred and fifty kids. So we are looking even this year at a point two counseling need because we have about sixty four kids, which fits right in that range. Um, again, that is being realized through savings in another area. So it's not a new cost to us, but if we get much bigger, and again. Um, we may, uh, if, if this becomes bigger, which would make the school, um, the brick and mortar school smaller, you could see just a shift in counseling services rather than new counseling have to be. So there is that ability. And that's again, where, um, Kay's office would come in in terms of helping staff that. So the idea of thinking that we would have to have some fluidity in teaching staff and counseling staff is very real. Um, sometimes it doesn't work out real cleanly and Kay will tell you as much as anyone. Uh, it's just, you know, thirty kids just don't automatically all sign up for the same course. So it doesn't always work out real cleanly. Um, other staff, and this is the part where, um, where we, it's the TBD, um, because there's all these other services that currently. Um, are not provided by the virtual school. We do not currently provide special education services. Our special education staff is very interested in that. We just are not large enough. Do not have a, we're not large enough in terms of scale to offer that yet. Um, but if we had enough students and we looked at that, and if, if we were to increase the cap, we'd also have to have a conversation about. Would we be offering some of these services? And again, these services may cost, uh, it may be shifting staff from one, um, brick and mortar to virtual. Um, but one lessons we've learned is by moving to virtual are the, the sped. Special education needs, um, it becomes much more difficult. The reason why that is, is. Uh, I mean, our, our special education staff is stretched very, very tight right now because sometimes they would be able to work with students in groups of five or higher. And right now in the virtual environment, it's really one or two. It's, it's much more difficult to have a group of students on a, in a virtual setting. Um, and so having, having a, um. Uh, having, if we were to get big enough and provide those services, um, this would, this would be something really I have to keep in mind. And then, uh, I apologized for the alphabet soup, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, English language services. Administration, if I'd have written them all out, I would have, this would have taken its own slide. Um, the registrar, so we, um, realized that, you know, like, this is a school, it requires a registrar. It, it requires secretarial services. We've covered that because we've been small, but if we get bigger, it'll require more services. And again, some of those might shift. Um, and some of those might be just as efficient in a, as with brick and mortar, but some might not. Um, on the laptops end, we've avoided, uh, full purchasing of laptops to keep costs down. We provided laptops. To students who have expressed a need for them. Um, it, it does cost about five hundred and fifty dollars for laptops cases and things like that. It is. Um, actually preferred to have it all be district laptops because. Um, by, we could then load all the things that they need as opposed to, um, when students use their own materials at home, which help keep costs down. But it did require some tech support and services, which gets a little bit more complicated. On the hotspots, it really depends on how many students would need hotspots. We have about a hundred and sixty students in the district right now. That have needed hotspots, um, across the entire district. So. This number may not be big. It may be right around that one, two percent. It may not be many kids, but it is something that we have to keep in mind to provide. Um, the services in a hotspot is forty dollars a month for about eleven months. And fortunately, the district with the closure. Um, our Oakley Public Schools Foundation has covered those costs, which has been wonderful. But it is just a cost to keep in mind. Supplies, and these are some of the other things that we provide. So for example, if a student has a, has a science lesson or some other things, we need to get out to that student and other field trips and community experiences. This may look different. We did a lot of things this last year at Pablo. We tried to coordinate some things with the Boys and Girls Club and some others. Um, and again, these are per student costs. So, um, if these may change if we're not able to actually do things. Um, with our students. And then down here on the assessment proctor. Um, one of the things to keep in mind is that, um, we still do have to do state assessments. Didn't have to do that this year because of the waiving of that. And so, uh, we, one of the things to keep in mind though, is that as we get bigger. Um, especially if we start covering a larger territory, um, we do have to provide state assessments. Which, which means either someone from the district going out and, and paying that person to go out and. Conduct state assessments, the forward exam, A C T, advanced placement, et cetera. Um, or hiring that service from someone in the area. So we actually have a student from Mequon that applied this year. And so if that student is in. And the state assessment, we will either have to drive to Mequon or hire someone from that area to be able to conduct it for us. So the governance board, um, had a conversation. It was really interesting. We talked about after agenda setting, uh, a week and a half or almost two weeks ago. Um, that this was, uh, that this was something that the board was interested in investigating. So it turned out that that same night, the virtual school. Uh, governance board met and we had a long conversation about this and you. Governance board met and we had a long conversation about this, and you can see some of the things that. That I mentioned earlier, current waiting list right now is ninety percent in district students. And that number about two fifty that I mentioned, one of the things that I've had a conversation with Appleton. I know when Appleton began their programming, one of the things that they mentioned is some of our, if we are teaching it. Some of our electives might be limited. So in other words, they, Appleton does it where they purchase the content from Pearson. And then they use their teachers. They only offer Spanish. They don't offer any other world language because it's just, they don't have enough students at scale. They have about five hundred and seventy-five students, roughly about. Two hundred and seventy-some at the secondary level, and so really, that number is real small. That's getting to be a relatively small secondary school, and so some of those elective opportunities go away. We could purchase additional services where it's that, where we use a teacher. From the provider, but then that of course would increase some of those costs. It's just something to keep in mind. We also know that it's kind of like. We've learned real quickly and in talking to other virtual schools. There's fifty to seventy-five percent, the number that say they want to be in the virtual school. And the number that actually retain and stick with it the whole way can range anywhere from about fifty to seventy-five percent. This is not uncommon. There is some fluidity in the virtual school market. And you just have to know that going in. So sometimes you'll hear these numbers like, you know, like you're hearing forty-six kids roughly are in the. Waiting list. That doesn't mean that if they all were to get in, they would want to stay in. We know right now that if we have forty-two students, that their lottery number and you were like, let's say you were number eight on the waiting list, we're pretty confident you're going to be in. That's just the nature of virtual, the virtual market. They have other places that they can go and shop and they don't have to leave their home to make it happen, so. And so one of the things, you know, they look for certain things and some look for a lot of variety, some look for quality. Sometimes those come hand in hand, sometimes they don't. And sometimes it's perception of what they think they're getting from one place to the other, and so it's just. It's, we're learning more and more about this as we go. We also know that with the mobility that we're going to see that under enrollment, so. Even if we put a cap this next year at forty-two, I'm pretty. Confident that we're going to see that number, if the cap stays at forty-two for the six twelve, that we're going to see that number probably settle around maybe thirty-seven, thirty-eight kids. Just because that's, that's kind of what happens with, you know, like you will literally see right near the beginning of the school year. People leaving and people wanting to come in suddenly. Like, we walked into the school year. We had twenty-eight slots allowed, twenty-nine enrolled and applied for the lottery, so one person got left out. By, when all was said and done, we were at fourteen kids, right around that fifty percent number. But right before the school year, suddenly we filled. And then we had a waiting list and things when they finally settled down, we ended up at twenty-three. So if you think about that, we went from twenty-nine. To fourteen, to, I think it was around thirty-some and landed around twenty-three. So it's got a lot of volatility. We were warned about that. That that would happen, not to let it disturb you or think you did something wrong, it's just the nature of the. Of the market. And then finally, one of the things that the Virtual School Inc., the governance board really had that long-range plan about slow growth, quality and rigor and training, so. They had a very, very long spirited conversation about understanding the situation we're in. At the same time wanting to make sure that they did something well over a long period of time. And really try to slowly grow it. They feel they've had a very successful first year. But knowing also that the situation the board is in, that this isn't really a simple solution. One thing that I wanted to share with you, and I know I'm still sharing my screen, and so I hope this works out. I want to share with you the enrollment patterns, and I'm going to try to make this bigger. The numbers in here, this is, remember I shared with you those dates? And everyone knows me, it says, I think data is just fascinating, so what we did is Jenna Matysar. That does the secretary work for the school and teaching and learning broke this down by applications. For the secondary kids and the elementary kids. And the elementary, if you remember, really wasn't even approved, and we already had kids applying. But you can see these are the different weeks and then how many applications were submitted. And you can see these numbers at the secondary in the left starting to kind of pick up around here. And this yellow, this was the week, remember that January thirtieth, this was the week that the application. Something that's really interesting is, we didn't see a huge surge, but we didn't see a tail off either. At the elementary level, what was interesting is we did not get a lot of applications. They just kept trickling in, but there was a big surge here, we're going to talk about that, and then this was the week, it was due, if I remember right, it was. April, I can't remember, I think it was. Whatever the number was. So this was the week that they were due. The green that I highlighted here, if you recall, we had a board meeting on Friday, March thirteenth. And Monday, March sixteenth, we closed. And then all school, after the sixteenth, and then all schools closed across the state on March eighteenth. So these two weeks are highlighted just to show you that we did see a little surge during, right, leading up to that. I'm not sure if these happen, we could look these up if they happened right after the thirteenth or right before. But we, I do find these data interesting. So again, the yellow was when the deadline was for in-district students to apply. The green weeks were surrounding those closure dates. And then the, kind of the light red here were the dates. Leading up to the non-resident application period. And you can see there was a significant number of elementary students in grades four and five that applied the week before that was due. So one of the things that makes us, the reason why we share these data is because we were wondering. You know, what did the events, I mean, whether it's something, I mean, this is clearly correlational. We don't know what actually caused the behavior. We just found it interesting to be able to say, oh, this happened. Right before that week and then the week of this was due, then that number settled back down and took a little bit lower, but. We just thought this was kind of interesting, so as the board were to wonder, if the cap were to be increased. Sometimes, I'm not sure if this tells us much, but if nothing else, it's just a neat data to be able to share. So I'm going to. Walk back to this slide and entertain any questions. You might have in terms of, I just got to switch this again. Because that was the end of the presentation, in terms of the potential of increasing the cap. As I hopefully mentioned at the beginning, or that you remember from the beginning, is I don't have a clearly defined. If you do this, that'll happen just because of the nature of virtual schooling. But at least you understand the variables hopefully that are at play, and if you need any clarification, I can help you with that.
Thank you, Jim. We do have it as an individually considered resolution, but doesn't seem like there's any specific action that you're necessarily asking for from us tonight?
Okay. And I think the idea of the resolution is if the board were to land on a decision where they want to see that number, you could actually vote on that. You can choose to do it another time. Obviously, you don't have another meeting scheduled till July, later July. So it's pretty difficult to be able to pin down an exact number of what that could be, because you can see there's many variables. I mean, one of the things that is a big challenge with this is. Is how quickly do you grow in a way that you have some control or management over? So if we were to suddenly say. Let's take the cap off, we could have. No change in applications, we could see a flood, we don't know where those all would come in, they might all come in as sixth graders, they may come out spread across the board. And we just don't have enough history to know exactly where they would land. Nor do we know also like what the market, you know, other districts are having conversations like we are as well. So it's very difficult to give a. You know, hey, we got to do this one thing, because there are so many variables at play. And this really wasn't part of our overall, remember this planning that I mentioned earlier. This was different than what we'd originally looked at, so the virtual board. Really did struggle with any particular recommendation other than to say, these are all the variables that they wrestle with. And this at least was their thinking in terms of expansion, but we're in a different time now.
Right, and I think part of the interest from the board was just wanting to have an idea of what might be possible if, you know, when we look at. You know, are we all going to be Oakley Virtual School members next year? So thank you for that. I will open the floor to questions and comments, Commissioner Harder.
Thank you, and thanks Jim for this presentation. Just a clarification on the ninety-three hundred dollar line item for ECSD teachers. And it's for each point one F T E, that makes sense. I think most of the other costs in this are. Kind of a per student cost, but I believe those would not be per student costs.
Correct, correct, yep, because a point one, if you had, if you had twenty kids in chemistry, if you had eight in chemistry, if you had thirty. You were still running a section of chemistry, which would cost you about ninety-three hundred dollars. So that's where that per student cost. Would depend on the number of students that you'd actually have in the section.
And the number, the variety of sections too.
Correct, yep. One of the things to keep in mind that I didn't mention is that. If you purchase the, if you purchase the learning from Pearson teachers, this cost gives you eight sections of eight different classes. Ironically, the five twenty-five allows your teacher to teach six sections as opposed to eight. So it's a little bit. There's a little bit of a limiting factor there, and we have found ways to work around that, and so to be honest, one of our things, and again, this is. This may not be as appealing in the past, is one of the things we've allowed students in the virtual school to have up to two credits at the brick and mortar school. So a student that is in the virtual school. We have one that went back to south and was in band and art, wanted to have those back at the brick and mortar, but that may not be as appealing, so again, it's another variable. These are all. There's just a lot of variables and sometimes you really don't know how it's going to shake out until it's all over. It's trying to predict human behavior, and that's tough.
Absolutely, right. But we can look at. Sort of the current makeup to get a sort of apples, more closer to an apples-to-apples cost. I assume. I guess it looks to me like maybe Pearson is going to be hard to beat in terms of their cost of the forty-three, forty-nine.
You can, you can find some others, but for the quality, it's a reasonable, I mean, it's a, it's not a small investment. I mean, there are a few others, but you are, the reason why they were chosen in particular was. They had a, they had a good track record with students in particular with math, but across the board, they were, they had the level of rigor, and when we got our first. Marching orders to look for virtual programming, we kept hearing quality, 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 and it is a quality program in the virtual market, they're one of the better ones. We know that there are some, and I will avoid using exact names, we know there are some players in there that provide. You'll hear like variety, and that seems very appealing. We really have favored quality. More than anything.
Yes, and I wasn't even speaking on quality because I hadn't heard much about it. It's good to hear. Those reviews though.
We feel pretty strongly about that.
Yeah, I know it was, has been mentioned as that was one of the guiding principles of this, putting this program together is to, you know, provide something better than what's the average out there, and it's great doing that. But just, I was really just speaking in terms of cost hard to beat. And would you agree with that? It's going to be hard to beat in terms of cost?
You mean if you were to go to a different contractor other than Pearson?
Well, I was really talking about piecing together our own and moving to our teacher-based system, which I think was part of the plan, but.
Oh yeah, you mean, so, sorry, I keep clicking, I keep clicking like I'm going to double-click and highlight, I'm sorry. So the five, you mean like the five twenty-five number, that's a really good number. It is, it allows you. But again, you have to partner that with our own teachers, so there is to be able to use their platform, but, right, so that one.
But our own teacher costs. Together with that five twenty-five are likely to add up to more than forty-four hundred dollars or whatever. Do you think that's true?
Right, but you still have to pay for the human being end of it, you know, our teacher. So, and again, that could be. And sometimes this doesn't, this is again Kay's world. You know, you don't always, so for example, if you have, let's just say you end up with twenty kids in chemistry. That want to take it, and they might have come from north and memorial, and it might have been ten and ten, it might not have been enough students that left. To decrease the number of sections at the high school, or it may have. You know, if thirty kids all come out, and then of course, these students right now are all being scheduled into classes, so. They might have to redo the whole master schedule to try to see if there's a more efficient way to have those students. So. Say three kids come out of Memorial. You might have rerun your whole master schedule to try to bring the number of sections at Memorial down by one. Be able to make that work, but just because we're best in the game.
Okay, that makes sense. You certainly said that there are a lot of variables that go into that per student cost, and that makes this clear. So yeah, thanks, thanks for that.
You bet.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yeah, so it was a natural segue, I guess. So what year did we begin the virtual school?
We just finished the first year, so we are young. We're very young at this, so, and that was part of the challenge is that we don't have a lot of. We have a bit, we have a bit of history, we've learned from some others, but we're just slowly growing this and getting bigger by the year.
Yeah, so that was going to kind of. Dovetail into any sort of data we have on outcomes, you know, educational outcomes. And your emphasis on quality, I think is really critical because that's one. Concern I'd want to make sure is paramount in any sort of online environment, whether it's. You know, in our current situation, or if it's very intentional. Online focused education is that it's, it has the greatest degree of parity of educational outcomes as possible, and. Sounds like we don't have that data yet, at least for our own. Our own platform.
Right, and partially because of the waiving of state assessments took place this spring, so, and again, our numbers are also very small too, so. When we're looking at with twenty-three students spread out over those seven grades. You can imagine statistically, we got a little bit before we start feeling confident about, because one or two students can make that shift. But we, I can say this, we had a hundred percent graduation rate, so we're feeling pretty good about that. Our two students made it across the board, so. But yeah, that's one of the pieces that we don't have the state data right now to be able to point to because of that. Because of the waiving of state assessments with the closure.
Commissioner Lyons?
Jim, Pearson builds on a full year with no prorated costs. Have we thought about. Asking the student to commit for the full year, or is that something that. Gets caught up in scheduling?
So it's with the smaller, and that's where we saw a lot of movement like right away at the beginning of the semester, and once the students were in, it wasn't really a conversation that we had to have with students, because once they settled in after the first couple of weeks, it really wasn't an issue. That would be something new to us, to have to have that conversation. And any family always has the ability to take their child to another virtual school somewhere else at any point in time, so. There's a little bit of a, it's, we're a little bit, just like in the public school too, right, they can always show up to Memorial or North or North. Star and choose to remove their child and go somewhere else, so we really don't, we're really limited in our powers on that end.
Director Johnson?
Yeah, just two points of clarification. I would, I guess I would request in future presentations that we have some. That we would be able to insert some dollar amounts for the other staff as appropriate, especially. Considering that virtual, virtual school opportunities should be available to our students with disabilities, and so. Being able to have a clear distinction in terms of those costs, I would appreciate in future presentations that that be available. And then my second question was, in terms of the surplus. Would it be the idea of that money going back into. To the virtual school and/or that coming into the larger pool for the school?
I'll answer those in the order that you asked. The first one in terms of this TBD. Is we don't know until we know what the students that you have, so it's hard to predict what's your special education, you won't know until you actually see the disabilities, right? But a student with speech and language issues may be very different than someone with significant physical disabilities that requires. So it's difficult because you don't know, right now the school is not providing those services because it's so small. But right now, if we became bigger, we would have a better sense of what those costs would be and have a little, and back to Commissioner Clemens. Question about how old is the school, we just don't have the track record to, now we're not big enough, and we haven't been providing those services. Because if a student does need those services, we provide those at the brick and mortar schools. We just don't also have the track record over time of providing those services to know what those costs would be. Your second question. What was it again?
So could I just, just a point of clarification, I think for me, it's the idea though, I'm not sure how this was rolled out or how it was promoted, but. One would gather potentially that those parents of children with disabilities, if the advertising and/or the way that this was rolled out. Don't have those reassurances that the same services, according to a student's IEP would be available in the virtual world. It may actually preclude them from being included. And then just my second question, is just what, what was the plan for the potential surplus?
Okay, let me go, let me just finish. So there was, every time a family puts their name into the lottery, there's a meeting that takes place with the family, and if the student has an IEP, then our special education staff sits down with them too, and they talk about places and services. So it's actually, if I can say anything about the virtual school, the front end of it looks very, very. the virtual school, the front end of it looks very, very, it's very intense, labor intensive in terms of meeting with the family to make sure that it's the right fit for the student and what the school is able to provide or not provide. And so those are, those are, each one of those conversations is done very personally, rather than just like a letter going out that what they will and won't be able to do. In terms of the surplus, I'd love to say that it went right into the, this goes back into the general fund of the district. So this just goes with its operating cost.
Thank you.
You bet.
So at this point, I'm not certain that I feel ready to act in any direct way without a recommendation. The thing about sort of pulling a number out of a hat doesn't feel particularly promising to me at this point. If my colleagues feel differently, we can certainly consider some motions or something to do. Otherwise, maybe we can continue on.
Okay.
And not seeing a lot of response there. I think we will just leave this where it is and have that in mind as if we need to consider going forward, the expansion when we know more about how our schools are going to look in the fall. Given the time, what I'd like to do is ask my colleagues to consider putting off the WIAA calendar and graduation committee report. It is not something that I'm led to understand is critical for this particular moment. And I do want to get to the referendum survey feedback. So if that's of interest to the rest of my colleagues, I'd hear a motion to table the WIAA calendar and graduation to a future meeting.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Right. So then we'll move into our work session. Again, given the time, what I think I'd like to do is, and Abby, are you the one who's going to be presenting?
No, I, I'm going to be presenting tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hardback. So maybe you can give us the information. We can try to ask, you know, any clarifying questions that we have, but we'll try to keep it tight here and keep this in mind. Budget development can consider it more fully in their meeting. And we can ask more questions at a future work session if we need to. So we'll try to keep this pretty tight, but have a chance to ask any clarifying questions that we need. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Hardback.
Okay. So our referendum survey update, we're going to go through this PowerPoint presentation, and we'll try to do it at breakneck speed. I'm going to ask whoever is running this presentation to move to the next slide. So our, we originally were scheduled to host listening sessions, as you know, in April 2020, and those had to be canceled due to the stay at home order. So we had a survey prepared to provide some initial feedback about the referendum priorities and how the community was feeling about that for the school board. And the budget development committee assisted in the creation of that survey. Next. So the purpose for the community feedback was to gauge the community's perspective on needs identified by the demographic trends and facilities committee, as well as the teaching and learning department. We wanted to look at what was the community's perspective on building new facilities to support our growing student population, to ensure consistent quality of facilities throughout the district, whether or not to upgrade the technology infrastructure to accommodate expanded online learning, whether or not to reconfigure existing classrooms and common areas to provide for flexible learning spaces, and to offer competitive salaries to recruit and retain high quality educators. I want to talk a little bit about the demographics. Those who responded to our survey, we had about 1,200 respondents. And typically, when we do a family survey, we get around 25, 2,800 respondents. But this was across both staff and families and community members. And as you look down at the graph, you can see the percentage of people who responded to the survey. With the largest number being parent or guardians of ECASD students, with 944. Now there's some overlap because, you know, we have staff who are also parents. In terms of the responses, you can, you can see the demographics, and I'm going to ask that we go on to the next slide. These are the demographics in terms of where people live. And overall, the majority of the respondents live in the city of Eau Claire. Next. With the number of people who have lived within the district, 47% have lived here more than 15 years. And it goes, it goes down from there. Next, please. This gives you an idea of response levels from the different schools. And there are some standouts here in terms of early learning, DeLong Middle School, Memorial High School, North High School, and South Middle. And that, that kind of makes a lot of sense because those tend to be our larger schools with the exception of early learning. In terms of the referendum priorities, what our surveying company did was to rate the priorities on a weighted scale, with offering competitive salaries to recruit and retain high quality educators as the highest priority, and building new facilities to support our growing student population as the last priority. The idea of providing a weighted priority is to make sure that every response counts, but to show the level of the response and the level of importance to that. Go on to the next slide, to some of the general information. This report also, in addition to showing those priorities, includes some thematic analysis of the responses. The survey was live from May 4th to the 14th. The open ended questions provided the basis for the, this thematic analysis. And what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the district? And over the, of, over the 1,200 people who responded to the survey, 193 answered this question. And 483 answered the question about what changes do you, would you like to see made to the instructional program? And 600 talked about additional services. All responses from the open ended questions were closely analyzed and coded to identify similarities and dissimilarities within the data. Pattern coding was then utilized to identify and categorize similar coded data to develop the major concepts. I think it's important to note that all of these questions were answered in the context of the COVID-19. And, and those COVID-19 themes emerged throughout the survey. Many participants shared comments that reflected the impact of the pandemic on their family lives and on the learning of their students, and were applicable. This is noted in the analysis of each question and of the participant responses. So I think that, you know, as you look at some of these responses, they really should be seen in and considered in light of the context of the pandemic and the stay at home order. So the first theme that emerged had to do with the biggest challenges in the district. I think that's on the next slide. Recruiting and retaining high quality staff. Participants shared the need to recruit and retain high quality staff by creating an inviting and professional climate that offers competitive salary and benefits to all school, school board employees, teachers, aides, hourly staff. Participants recommended better communication and feelings of trust and respect for all of these positions. Online learning. Many participants shared concerns regarding the implementation of online learning, particularly in the light of the COVID closing in schools. Some participants shared that there was not enough technology and infrastructure in place to, prior to the closure, and others shared that they hope the district would use this situation to carefully plan for online learning, not only to lower class size, but to offer more curricular choices in the future. Salary and benefits was the third concern. They've, many of the participants shared their belief that school based staff are underpaid and undervalued and by the community, and believe that increasing salary and benefits would positively impact retention. Participants also shared the perception that it would help teachers feel like they are failing for their workload. Some participants also share perceptions that administrators receive disproportionate pay compared to school level staff. In terms of class size, participants shared concerns regarding student teacher ratios, as well as concerns related to disproportionate class sizes based on course enrollment, particularly at the high school level. Some participants shared perceptions that class size varies based on school or the area in which a school is located. Facilities. Participants shared varied concerns regarding facilities. Some shared concerns about outdated facilities that impact academic and athletic opportunities. Some shared concerns regarding the historical use of referendum funds being used only to update facilities rather than modernize them. Some participants questioned the use of referendum funds to build facilities when the district has sold the buildings. Some participants shared concerns about equality of facilities throughout the district. Communication, transparency, and trust. And you'll note that these concepts are presented from the most to the least recurrent, but I think there's a lot to unpack in, in this particular one. Participants shared concerns regarding timely and transparent communication regarding the referendum process, this attendant search and transition, and the disconnects between the stakeholders, whether it's district level staff, school level staff, school board, parents, community members. Participants shared perceptions of distrust related to previous interactions with administrators and the school board. So as we began to unpack this, some of the things that we found out were that it's very important in terms of going forward with the referendum, that all of the stakeholders understand school funding and how school funding in Wisconsin affects our particular school district. By making those understandings very clear and fair and really unpacking how that school fund, funding formula impacts Eau Claire really does go a long way to build trust. And I can tell you from my personal experience in the last referendum and working with Chris McBoyle, who was the president at that time, we spent a great deal of time talking about the revenue caps, talking about how our per pupil spending, even though we were the largest school district in the state, was below the state average in per pupil's funding, funding, really helped people to understand why we were going to referendum. And that's a very, very important piece of that. Families talked in this part about a definitive place to go to get information. They, staff talked about the need to hear about what was happening in the district from inside the district before it was shared outside the district. And there was some concern about messages being shared by the school board and messages being shared within the schools and how that might be just a little bit ignorant, the need for alignment. So, you know, I think there's a lot to unpack there. In terms of the, what changes people would like to see to the instructional program, they want to see expanded offerings. We talked about international baccalaureate, gifted and talented programs, advanced placement, more advanced courses in the core content areas, more foreign language in the early grades, and courses that teach life skills and career skills. They wanted to see more active learning, increased recess, and research-based curriculum and instructional practices. In terms of equality and consistency, participants said they would like to see consistent course offerings throughout the district. They shared the difficulties of navigating a variety of online tools, particularly during the closure related to COVID. Many of the respondents suggested utilizing one or two tools to communicate and teach, access online, online learning would make the process easier, not only for students, but for families. Participants also shared the perception that they believe that there are disparities in access to technology and resources for learning across different schools and areas of the district. In terms of online learning, they talked about the planning and implementation of online learning related mainly to COVID. They suggested that more structure was needed for online learning for students. They suggested that utilizing online, online learning beyond the COVID crisis, and that many students were thriving in an online environment. Suggestions included allowing students to participate in online coursework for courses that were not offered by the district as a means of enhancing programs. They talked about alternative learning environments for students who may need to be out of the classroom, and plans for utilizing online learning for other closures such as snow days. And rather than having to make up snow days, that we use online learning during the snow days. Lots of feedback about social emotional learning and mental health, talking about how the instructional program purposely integrates social learning and mental health and wellness into the school day and curriculum. They, some of our respondents connected this to testing, and some respondents connected this to the online learning environment related to COVID. There were many suggestions, including utilizing specialists and research-based practices to implement a greater emphasis on social emotional learning and mental health. Flexibility. Respondents said that they would like to see teachers have more autonomy and flexibility to plan for and implement curriculum instruction that is differentiated, culturally responsive, and engaging, especially during the COVID-related closure. They talked about including flexibility in bell schedule when the school year opens. And they also talked about concerns about what kind of flexibilities would be in place for families and for students if schools were required to practice social distancing. And then they talked about meeting the needs of students. Lots of emphasis on equity. Lots of emphasis on equity. Specifically, respondents mentioned students who receive special education services and students who receive support for English language learning. Incorporating more culturally responsive teaching practices and including those practices in teacher evaluation. Participants also added more interventions were needed and aids to support the multilevel system of support. And then in terms of the additional services that would be, help the district meet the needs of students, we had about 609 respondents out of the 1,200 who responded to this. And a lot of it was around technology, particularly during the COVID crisis. There was a lot of recommendation to have one-to-one devices be made available to all students and staff to facilitate online learning and to help students develop knowledge of skills. Respondents suggested appropriate training and professional development be offered to teachers and to families. Support services, respondents said they would like to see a great many more support services, both in the schools and in the community. Some of their suggestions included increasing counselors and other specialists such as social workers, interventionists, behavior clinicians, and programs to meet essential needs. In terms of communications, respondents shared support for consistent, timely, and regular communication. They suggested offering several different ways to share concerns and the desire to be listened to by administrators and school board members. There was some discussion or some feedback about recognizing tools that, there are a lot of tools that are used in the district to push out information to families, but not as many tools that allow families to respond and to have ongoing conversations about subjects that are important to them other than through email. And some of the respondents said, that, you know, that you send in an email, you get an email back, but then what happens? And so there was this idea of being able to have some type of ongoing conversation. A lot of participants recommended collaborative practices, both inside the classroom and at home. We wanted project-based learning and community-based learning, more engagement with the community and with the technical college. There was some concern about substitutes and whether there were enough high-quality substitutes available to work in the district. Some concern and some questions about electives and extracurriculars. Some respondents shared interest in increasing coursework, again, focusing on foreign language, performing and fine arts, career and technical education and life skills, as well as clubs and athletics that empower and engage students from all backgrounds and interests. Some questions about whether there was too much emphasis on athletics. Professional development, participants suggested professional development and training for teachers in several areas, including curriculum and instruction, technology, support for differentiation, social, emotional learning, and ways to further engage students. So that in a nutshell was the feedback. And, you know, that can be shared in more detail with budget development and in other board discussions. But I do think it gives you a very good overview of what some of the community is thinking in terms of a focus for the referendum.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. At this time, I guess I would ask if any of the board members had just some clarifying questions or more information that they'd like to see from this survey going forward. And again, we'll carry this discussion on, I'm sure, in budget development. And, you know, if we're going for a referendum in the spring, there will be work sessions on the work quite frequently. Commissioner Harder, no, sorry, Commissioner Lyons, I guess. I try to watch when you unmute and I try to get you in order. So please forgive me when I don't notice you. But, yeah, we'll start with Commissioner Lyons.
Dr. Hardbeck, were there any surprises for you? Or was this pretty much what you expected from the survey?
Actually, I think there were some surprises. And I, as I said, even though the communication, transparency, and trust factor was the last thing that was mentioned in one of the areas, the idea of, once you unpack that, and they're talking about communication with key administrators in the school board about the referendum, it's the idea of really understanding the why. You know, what is the funding cycle? How does it, how do our revenue caps play into it? Why is it that we're, you know, kind of always in a financial bond? When they see other school districts, like similar school districts like La Crosse, that don't appear to be in such a bind, not understanding that they have a much higher revenue cap than we do or that they've been to referendums several times, which is in operational referendums, which has increased their revenue cap. I think those are all really, really important things. And I kind of think about some of the work that Chris McBoyle and I did in terms of the last referendum, really focusing on those ideas of where we are in the size of our district, what we spend per pupil, and how that doesn't really even yet come up to the state average. There's some real inequities in funding in Wisconsin's funding formula. And I think I was surprised because we had spent so much time trying to educate, but then I realized people move through the school district, you know, and so we may have a new audience. And I think that's very, a very important thing to keep in mind as you move forward with the referendum, helping people to understand what our revenue caps, how our revenue caps limit us and what we can offer for students, because we are spending below the state average in per pupil spending.
Commissioner Harder?
Thanks, Dr. Hardbeck, for this presentation. There's a lot of, lot of information, as you say, a lot to unpack here. And particularly, it looks like around the open-ended questions. And it's a great sort of summary here in the last few slides of the different themes that came out. And it's great that they're sort of in order of most to least recurrent. Although you hit on a lot of sort of nuances to these bullet lists that aren't reflected in the slides. I wonder if, is, do you think there'd be value in trying to express some of those new, more nuanced granular ideas as well in writing for the board? I don't know if it's--
I mean, we, certainly, we can get that information for you and for the Budget Development Committee. We tried to give, or what I tried to do was to give the overview of what we found out. You know, when we put this survey out, it was kind of a toe in the water type of survey, so we could get some initial indications of what was important to the community. I think it's also important to keep in mind, we had 1,200 respondents to this community. Typically, when we do a family survey, we'll get about 2,800 responses. And then on top of that, we'll get about 900 to 1,000 staff members who will weigh in on their survey. So this is a very small sampling, but it really gives, I think, the board some indication of what people are thinking about and what they're caring about. And I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is this is all being filtered through what people are experiencing right now with the stay-at-home order and the COVID-19 pandemic crisis. That does have an impact on the feedback that we're getting.
That makes a lot of sense. And so in terms of, as a toe in the water, and I know we've sort of laid this out, but if you can just remind me and the other board members of, sort of, now that we've had the toe in, what do you see as the next steps to sort of help carry this?
I think one thing that comes out loud and clear is that from this particular survey, from the people who responded to this survey, being able to offer a competitive compensation package is seen as a way of recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. And that has been a priority for the school board for, I would say, the last at least five years. And so what can you continue to do to strengthen that? And at the same time, there's a concern about kind of increasing class size. And sometimes in order to provide a competitive compensation package, the class size has to increase because of the, and we've talked about this many times, the 80/20 percentage of our overall operating budget and 80% goes to compensation and benefits. So how do you balance that and keep that as a priority? Because it is important in terms of being able to retain high-quality staff and also recruit high-quality staff to the district.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you again, Dr. Hardbeck. One thing that I had some questions on in the data was whether we can get some sort of regression analysis, kind of accounting for some of our demographic factors. There's certainly ample evidence here that we're, that an operational piece to our referendum is something that the community wants. And at the same time, we have to recognize that, you know, a third of the respondents were staff members of the district who naturally would want to be better compensated. And of course, I think many of us on the board believe they should be, and we've made that priority and we want to keep working at it. So I wonder if it's possible to, it might give a different picture if we look at the lens of desires through a couple of different, you know, if we factor in the different ways that people are coming at the questions. I'll also, I'll, you know, send you an email about specific things that I'm thinking of so we don't have to discuss them here tonight, but I appreciate all of the information.
Well, and this is an initial, when I say putting your toe in the water, we talked a little bit in budget development about the idea of getting some internal agreement about, you know, what the priorities are, what the challenges are. I think this gives you some talking points that you would probably heard initially if you had had listening sessions. You might consider these as kind of an overall listening session. And then going back and talking about and trying to craft some ideas about how you might structure your referendum and then now for listening sessions to really get some feedback, you know, and having some conversation with folks. I think that's where the real power of this kind of information comes from. It's like, it's almost like verifying what you've heard and being able to dig a little deeper and ask questions.
Commissioner Harder?
I was just going to say, also maybe recognizing some places where if, you know, if the board and/or the administration believes there's some things we need to do. I look at the, you know, just how low the facilities question ranks for respondents. And yet, you know, at least as one board member, I feel a real urgency about that problem when we look at the overcrowding and we know what kind of effect that has on our ability to have achievements. So maybe some, a little bit of sales work on some of those ideas.
Well, and I think that's what comes out in that communication piece and also in that transparency piece about educating the community and staff and families about, you know, what some of the needs are of the school district. But keep in mind, you know, we have 11,000, what, 11,500, 200 students on any given day. And this represents about, not even 10%, you know, of, when you factor in the community members that also responded. So it's a small sampling. I think you've gotten a lot of good information from it, and it certainly gives you a little bit of a foundation to begin to really think about the recommendations from teaching and learning and recommendations from the demographic and trends committee, and then start testing those ideas out in some community listening sessions. I think you'll get a better feel for where the whole community is in terms of those priorities.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, if there are no other comments or questions, thank you, Dr. Hardbeck, for that information once again. We'll go on to requests for future agenda items.
I've got a couple here for you, Tim, to consider. One is committee composition and function. So being new to the school board, it seems like we have relatively limited formal opportunities for persons to contribute and volunteer and contribute their expertise. And, you know, we saw really an excellent and diverse range of people who tried to volunteer to serve on the board. And, you know, it seems like many of them would be just great to get involved in some, in some way beyond what they're doing now. And, you know, it seems like our current committees are somewhat limited in allowing us to do that. So I have no idea what the state is on how other districts utilize such groups and bodies. So, you know, that would be, I think, helpful for me because I'd hate to see, you know, many of the folks who said they wanted to serve on the board not have that opportunity to contribute in some way. And also selfishly, as someone who's done a lot of work with nonprofits and other forums, you got to have that kind of pipeline of leaders who serve. And if you're coming in cold to a school board, it takes a long time to get up to speed. Whereas if you have opportunities to serve on committees for a while, you at least get a good handle on some chunk of it. My other number two item is just a review of, for the board, especially because there's, many of us are new. Most of us have been on the board for less than a year, actually, is a review of our equity and inclusion policies and practices. I know that has been a priority of past board members, but it doesn't seem to be as explicit, at least to the public, that what we're all doing as a school district, especially given the current state of the world. And so I think it'd be really helpful to be able to communicate that both to the board and also to the public as to what we're doing. Because I think that's tremendously important to reflect what we're doing and recognize that we always have to be striving to do better in this regard.
Thank you. Hearing none, I will accept the motion to adjourn the meeting without declaring the time, which we will get tighter as we go along here.
No move.
Second?
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for staying up late with us, everybody. We'll see you in July.
Thanks a lot.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.